What were you guys doing? Well, we've been back there for a couple hours doing interviews, so they, I'm sure they had some business to attend to. Um, I did say that out loud. And it all went well. Everything turned out okay, I'm assuming? Okay. Anything else you'd like to share with us this evening about? You're all good? Okay. All right. I will call the Dublin City Council meeting of Monday, November the 4th, to order, and Lieutenant Colonel Noble is with us. Colonel, if you could maybe have your crew stand up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, I would appreciate that.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lieutenant Colonel, if you could introduce everyone that has come with you, we would greatly appreciate that.
(inaudible) United States Navy, Thomas Van De Beer, United States Marine Corps, Jim Jager, United States Air Force, Dana Martin, United States Marine Corps, Tom Dushel, United States Army.
Well, welcome. And Colonel, if you want to take the podium, you're going to help us understand the ceremony that will be next Monday morning on Veterans Day. Explain that for us, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff members and visitors, you're all invited to attend our Veterans Day ceremony, Monday, November 11th. We begin with a complimentary breakfast by La Chatelette, number one, at 8:30, thereabouts. The ceremony will be at 11 o'clock. We have about 1,000 school kids there, couple hundred veterans. It's all good. The school kids participate in the ceremony, their band provides the music, our piper is back, which is a good thing, so we'll have Hopper the Piper, and a keynote speaker. And I won't reveal who that is, because it'd spoil the surprise. But certainly, come, join us, celebrate what we are and what we do.
Thank you so much, Lieutenant Colonel. You are such a tremendous asset to our community, and you assist us in recognizing our veterans in so many different ways, not just on Veterans Day, but throughout the year. And if anyone has not had the opportunity to attend the ceremony down at the Grounds of Remembrance, go. It is a moving ceremony. If that doesn't give you chills, nothing will. And when you have the, especially when the kids walk down from cells and they participate in the program, and they, some of them maybe for the first time ever, really understand the sacrifices our veterans made, and they aren't an abstract group of people, they're people that are standing in front of them. And it is really a terrific ceremony, and we greatly appreciate what you do for the community and what you allow us to do for our veterans. It always makes me very uncomfortable, I'm not a veteran, and it makes me always uncomfortable. I feel as though I'm not necessarily worthy to address your fellow service members that have served this country, and so I always hesitate to do that. But I am comfortable, I have signed a proclamation, but as, I am more comfortable with John, who is a veteran, is going to share this proclamation with us, because I think that is an appropriate thing to do.
Colonel, whereas Veterans Day was first celebrated as Armed Forces Day in 1919 to commemorate the signing of the ceasefire agreement with Germany at the end of World War I, and was intended to honor all soldiers who had died in the service of their country. And whereas the name of the commemoration was changed to Veterans Day in 1954, to honor all who have served, and whereas Ohio is the home of nearly 900,000 veterans and military service members, the sixth largest population in the United States, and whereas there are more than 21 million veterans across the United States who have preserved the peace domestically and throughout the world over decades of conflict, and whereas American veterans have selfishly fought for our country, defended the innocent, protected democratic ideals that we hold so dear, and placed the security of our nation before their own safety, all while facing the trauma and severe hardships of war, and whereas, on Veterans Day, and every day, it is important that we pay tribute to the brave men and women who ensure our safety and reflect the best of our country. And whereas the City of Dublin and the Wesley G. Davis American Legion Post 800 invite veterans and their families to a breakfast hosted by La Chatelette in historic Dublin, and the public ceremony to follow at the Grounds of Remembrance in Dublin, Veterans Park, on the 11th day, the 11th month, Monday, November the 11th, at the 11th hour, for a time of recognition and remembrance. Now, therefore, I, Gregory Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of the Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of November the 11th through the 15th as Veterans Week. In the City of Dublin, urging all citizens to recognize the sacrifices made by veterans in preserving our freedoms, and encouraging all citizens to display the U.S. flag and to participate in patriotic activities throughout the week. Signed this 4th day, November 2019. Gregory Peterson, our mayor.
If you would. Now, you stay right there, stay right there. There's another veteran amongst us whose career, not only serving this country, but serving this community, is going to come to a sunset at the end of this year, and that's Mike Keenan, who is our fellow council member, is also a veteran. So Mike, if you would do me the honor of delivering this proclamation. You're not a veteran? Oh my goodness, I thought that you were. Well, you serve this community very well. Would you do me a favor and present Jeff Noble with this proclamation?
(inaudible)
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll see you on Monday. Citizen comments. I don't have anybody that has signed in, but if anybody would like to step up and make a comment, all you got to do is raise your hand, and you can come up, and we will listen to whatever you want to talk about for five minutes. Seeing no hands, we will continue on with the agenda, the consent agenda. There are two items, minutes from the October 7th meeting and the October 21st meeting. I make a motion to approve those two meetings. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Jenny?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Second reading, public hearing on ordinances. Ordinance 53-19, Jenny?
Res zoning approximately 33.9 acres, south of US 33, east of Iderman Road, and north of Shire Rings Road, from ID 1 Research Office District to PUD Planned Unit Development District, the Ohio State University Wexner Medical Center, for the construction of up to 550,000 square feet of ambulatory medical care, medical and office uses, as well as potential future hospital in two phases.
If you could also do me a favor, Jenny, I'm going to take this out of order for efficiency reasons, if you could also read Resolution 59-19.
And I will excuse myself?
Yeah. Christina needs to excuse herself from both of those pieces of legislation, so I figured we'd do them at the same time.
Resolution 59-19, approving and accepting the plat for University Boulevard Phase 2 right-of-way dedication and subdivision with a variance to lot size.
Okay, 53-19. Claudia?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, thanking you for throwing me that curveball. I will do that again.
Sorry, I, you'll adjust. You'll figure it out, you'll figure it out.
No, but efficiency is good. Ordinance 53-19 was introduced at your last meeting in October, and this ordinance is before you, in the exact same state I was in, so there are no updates. And with that, we are continuing to recommend approval of this rezoning ordinance for the 33 acres from the ID 1 District to the Planned Unit Development District, with the preliminary development plan for Phase 1 and Phase 2 for the proposal, as well as the development text that is included in your packet. And like I said at the first reading, this came to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we are carrying this forward here tonight as well. And so we have those eight conditions that are part of their approval, and staff is recommending approval as well.
Claudia, can you put the conditions up again? I wanted to be sure that we captured the conversation we had last time together.
So we have, at this point, not changed the curb islands that we had discussed at the first reading. In reviewing the text, it really doesn't speak to it in terms of there not being requirements more along the lines of if there were during the final development plan stages, areas where we can work with the applicant, based on the conversation that we had last week, we will certainly be aware of that as we get to more details in the next stage.
I would prefer to capture the intent. You know, I am wholeheartedly in agreement that if we can do bioswells and we can, you know, make this a greener development, I absolutely want that to be accomplished. But I want to be sure that the lack of curbs are only, the only justification for areas where there won't be curbs will be so that the bioswells can be successful.
Yeah, I can certainly clarify that.
And I guess, I guess the rest of the council is in agreement, just to make sure everyone's okay with that.
I wonder if you could just, for those of us that don't deal with this every day, define a bioretention measures and bioswale for me? What is, what exactly are?
So what they're, what they're trying to accomplish is to, before it would get to storm sewer, if you can send it through some living organism, a bioswale of sort, it will filter out a lot of the impurities that leach out of the cars and things in the parking lot, and then it goes on into the storm system, and so on and so forth. So it helps, it's the first layer of cleaning of the water. And what they want to do is provide openings in the curbs so that the water can get into the bioswale, rather than having a catch basin that sends it directly into a storm sewer. And so I think what the intention was is to allow space for this water to move into the bioswale, have its first level of treatment before it would move on to a secondary or tertiary level of treatment. So I think that gaps in the curbs are perfectly acceptable, but we want to have some curbs on the ends of islands and things like that, otherwise cars cut them short, and it's unsightly for them, they'll spend a lot of money, Aaron's giving me the thumbs up, they'll spend a lot of money repairing those kind of areas, and that's all.
So I, again, we're talking about condition number four, and I added a little bit of clarification to the end of that, with the curb island in appropriate locations to ensure the success of any bioswells, so it would really speak to that in those instances.
As long as planning can capture the intent when they're doing their reviews.
Yeah.
And they can place them wherever they want, it doesn't matter, but...
And Aaron, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Can, Mayor, can we, I guess, get that on the record? Could Aaron come forward and, on behalf of the applicant, and?
Good evening, Aaron Underhill with Underhill &amp; Hodge, 8000 Walton Parkway, New Albany, here on behalf of the applicant, and we're in agreement with the language in the condition and with the intent expressed this evening.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions from council? Thank you. Hearing none? Jenny?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
And then if we could go to Resolution 59-19, Claudia? Does that make it too difficult for you? If it does, we can get Christina.
I'm all good. So this resolution is for the, sort of accompanying the ordinance that we just did for a preliminary plat that, A, creates right-of-way for accessing this particular site, and also then creating lots, one of which will be developed with the Wexner Medical Center. And this also comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission, which they did at their September meeting. We have shared with the applicant, as well as with several members of the community throughout the months of August, and most recently in October, the regional roadway network that this particular plat will tie into, and in red there on the screen is approximately the area that is being impacted here. And it also reflects the thoroughfare plan and the connectivity that this piece of right-of-way will do for the West Innovation District, with the intent being that eventually it would move toward the west and north to tie in with roadway that is there serving Ohio University currently. And then this is a graphic that we've, again, shared with, in our public meetings, to kind of give a better overview of all the infrastructure needs that will be part of the phasing of this particular plat, and it includes the relocation of the ditch there on the bottom of your screen, as well as in the center, the roundabout, that will be the main entry point for, for the OSU facility, as well as additional intersection improvements in terms of roundabouts for getting people along Shire Rings in the east-west movement, and providing also access to the Service Center, the Fleet Maintenance Facility, and the Dublin City Schools Transportation Facility. And here is what really the plat entails in terms of the preliminary plating. So there are about 10 acres that will be platted as right-of-way, and then there will be five lots created, with the Ohio State Facility located on Lot 2, which is approximately 33 acres, and again, in the center of this plat. There are no other developments proposed as part of this, nor have we been approached by anyone to develop any of these other parcels. The city has ownership of them, and there could be development in the future, which would most likely also require rezoning. One of the things I wanted to point out is that, see if I can get this pointer to work, this, all of the parcels are currently zoned in the West Innovation District, and there is a requirement for parcels to be not less than three acres in size. And we have one here, just this little half-circle shaped lot, which is Lot 5, that is created due to the way that the roadway will intersect with Iderman Road, and provide movements there, as Iderman is remaining in its existing location. So it's a residual piece of land, it is creating a lot, it's not a lot that really can be developed, but because it does not meet the underlying zoning, the staff is requesting that council approve a variance through the subdivision regulation, which is a permitted process, to allow this Lot 5 to be created at less than three acres.
Who's adjacent to that, that Lot 5?
Sethwin is adjacent to that.
Well, to the north, to the south is Joffrey.
Oh, to the south? Joffrey, yes, excuse me, yes.
Claudia, can you tell me a little bit about the thinking behind creating that lot? Because, you know, clearly, that parcel is in the middle of the road, so I would imagine that there would be some acquisition that would have to happen in the future. Why would we create that lot at this point in time and not leave it as residual land and create a lot when there was additional properties available?
It kind of, it is residual land, but because it is, the Joffrey lot is its own lot with lot lines, it just, it creates a lot. The only other chance, the only other thing we could do is extend that right-of-way and make the whole thing right-of-way. It is residual land, but it still is a lot.
So why wouldn't we just leave it as right-of-way until we came to such a time that there was going to be a lot created? Because it seems like there, a lot will be created when the land acquisition happens for the balance of University Boulevard.
I'm not 100% sure that that would really happen in that particular instance. I think one of the reasons why it's not right-of-way is because we don't need that much right-of-way in that area, and if we ever wanted to vacate it, that would be another ordinance, another means of having to go through steps. It is more or less a geometry of the intersection that, that creates this piece.
And why is it shaped that way? Why doesn't it, why don't we have the, the right-of-way along University Boulevard and along Iderman Road? Why doesn't it front all of Iderman? Why does it kind of?
You mean, why is the right-of-way not a triangle?
Yes.
I would suggest that, that this is an interim condition, first of all. University Boulevard will be extended to the north and west ultimately. Right now, it's got to tie into Iderman Road, so the sightlines and everything have to be appropriately addressed, so I would imagine that's probably going to be more of a temporary condition in the long run. I don't know, Paul or Megan, if you want to comment on that? Paul or Megan, if you want to comment on that or not?
Barb Cox.
Oh, Barb. There's a Calvary, I knew somebody would help me out.
Good evening, Barb Cox with the Engineering Department. Claudia, if you could go to the slide that shows the actual street improvements, you can see on this slide, over on Iderman, we're sweeping Iderman kind of north and east to the single lane roundabout, so that lot that is created is kind of between the Joffrey building and that roundabout. We, we labeled it as a lot versus, we probably could label it as a reserve, we could make it right-of-way. It is land that is still city-owned, I think it's just kind of, it's a piece that, over time, we might need to change the shape of it, to extend the road, because the geometry would probably flatten out just a little bit to move it to create the road extension going to the west.
I just hate to break our own rules if we don't have to. You know, if we get in the habit of making exceptions that a lot is smaller than what we have designated lots are supposed to be, then we've broken our rule for, and I'm not sure we've gained anything by doing so, and we've set a precedent that lots maybe don't have to be three acres. So that was, that was the intent behind my question.
Sure, I can appreciate that, and this, again, the road geometry with the four-lane divided, and the curves that we have to have for that, and the depth we were trying to get for the OSU parcel, I mean, there's a lot of pieces...
Given this, I understand the shape, I just don't know if we should create a lot or, but, you know, it's not that big of a deal, I just don't, didn't want to do it if we didn't have to do it, so the next person that comes in the door says, well, this lot isn't three acres, and ours isn't either, so.
One other thing I would add is, I mean, I, it's obvious by looking at the drawings, so there's no top, nothing top secret here. If you look at, we will impact the property adjacent to it, so this will probably be, I would guess, potentially negotiated in as part of that, which would actually enhance that condition to the south, and so it's really, I don't want to underestimate the process, but if that landowner were having, having to be cooperative, we're going to wind up doing a trade for that, and it's all going to be a matter of paperwork at the end of the day. In terms of lots and so forth. So, so this is an incremental step probably to that end, but if, but if, you know, the neighbor would prefer not to do that, then it's, it's going to have to be separate in that condition for a while, so.
It's not a hill to die on, I was just, was...
Any other questions?
That's, that's all I had.
Mike, anything? Any other questions? Okay, Jenny?
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Thank you, Claudia.
And we wanted to make sure there's two motions, one for the variance and one for the plat acceptance.
Okay. I think that was for the variance, now let's vote on the plat acceptance.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Let me get Christina. Thank you, Claudia, for...
Sure.
All right, I make a motion that we waive council rules to address ordinances 54-19, 55-19, and 56-19 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Jenny?
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
If you could please read those three ordinances.
54-19, authorize city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire a 0.041 acre fee simple warranty deed for right-of-way without limitation of existing access rights, and a 0.075 acre standard highway easement from AV Tedeschi and JC Tedeschi located at 5491 Cara Court for the public purpose of constructing a roadway which shall be open to the public without charge. 55-19, authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire a 0.110 acre fee simple warranty deed for right-of-way without limitation of existing access rights, a 0.040 acre temporary construction easement, and a second 0.010 acre temporary construction easement from Vineyard Christian Fellowship at Tuttle Crossing located at 5400 Avery Road for the public purpose of constructing a new roadway which shall be open to the public without charge. Ordinance 56-19, authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire a 0.041 acre standard highway easement from Brian Reitler and Erica Reitler, trustees of the Cara Road Trust Agreement dated June 22nd, 2018, located at 6129 Cara Road, for the public purpose of constructing a roadway which shall be open to the public without charge.
Thank you, Jenny. Paul?
Members of council, I have no updated information to provide beyond that given to you at the first reading. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. Staff does recommend approval of these three ordinances.
Thanks, Paul. Any questions from council? Hearing none, Jenny?
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Ordinance 57-19, Jenny?
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Hagerty Insurance Agency, LLC, to induce it to lease a facility to locate an office and its associated operations and workforce all within the city, and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
Jeremiah?
Good evening, members of council. No additional information unless you have questions about, from the first reading. We do have a representative from Hagerty here this evening to talk about the project and answer any questions you may have about the company. So I'll turn it over to Greg, if you'd like to introduce our guest, or he can introduce himself.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Go ahead, you need to give us your name and address for the record.
Yep, so it's Chris Leibhuber, and it's 121 Driver's Edge in Traverse City, Michigan, 49684.
Welcome, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for the warm reception, and I did pass out the books there, give our history and a little bit about us, I'm going to talk a little bit about us, if that's okay, just take a few minutes. So I'm the Vice President of People and Strategy Operations at Hagerty, I've been with the organization for 16 years, and we are very excited to partner with all of you and, and come to town and be an active participant in this, this great community. So Hagerty is an automotive lifestyle brand, so we offer products and services for people who love cars and driving, and not just any old cars, but fun-to-drive, classic cars, sports cars, enthusiast cars, so it's a really fun space to be in, and we have the best customers in the world. We're probably best known for our insurance, and we insure over 1.5 million of these vehicles, and we also have a lot of other products and services. We have the third-largest automotive magazine in circulation in the world, and we have a membership program called the Hagerty Drivers Club. We also have a nice business that we added recently, and it's, it's really fun, it's called Drive Share, it's a peer-to-peer rental car platform, so it's like the Airbnb for classic, fun-to-drive cars. So it's, it's really great space. We also hold a lot of events around the country and bringing people together, and having this sense of community is really important to us, that's why people have these cars, and that's what they love to do with them. And we also believe that's our responsibility with our scale, that, that we get youth involved in this as well. And so we talk a lot about passing the keys to the next generation, and so one of the events that we do, and we do several youth events, one of them that we do is my favorite, is that we get our members to bring their classic cars, and the members actually teach youth how to drive manual transmissions. Classic cars, grinding gears and all, so. But that's the passion behind this, and it's, it's really awesome to see this lost art of driving the stick shift continue. So we have 1,200 employees worldwide, and we are an international company, we're headquartered in beautiful Traverse City, Michigan, where they're already de-icing planes, which is true. And we have six offices, this... And we have six offices. This will be our seventh, the Dublin office will be. And we, as I said, we are international, so we have an office in Canada and UK and Germany as well. We're known for our great customer service. We have some of the highest net promoter scores of any company in any industry. And net promoter score is a representative of loyalty and customer service. And this all starts because we treat our employees really, really well. And so when you have employees that love their job and are engaged in their work, it's easy for them to give great service and experience to our members. And so they're compensated really well. They get to work on challenging and meaningful work. We promote from within, and it's, it's been recognized by the Great Place to Work Organization. We've, we've won several awards throughout the years. And then we also support teams in giving back and being active participants in their communities. So we give two days a year of paid time off for each employee to volunteer at whatever nonprofit that they, they would see fit. And so I think really importantly, we're a growth company. We've had great growth through our, in our entire history as an organization. The last five years has been our fastest period of growth. And when we look to the future in our plans, we actually think that there's unprecedented growth in the next five years. And so that's what led us to search for a new location. And so what we're going to be doing here in Dublin is that we're going to be opening an office at the beginning of 2020. And it's going to employ a sales and service team, have claims adjuster roles. It'll have digital and technology positions and insurance product positions as well. And so we actually believe that much of our future growth from a personnel standpoint will be in this Dublin office. And so you're probably wondering, "Why Dublin?" right? Or maybe you're not, because you live here and you know it's great.
Chris, we know why Dublin.
We did a national search this year, and we visited a lot of cities. And when we came to Columbus, it was clear that there was something different. And it was everyone that we talked to, from the EDO to the universities to the employers, everyone was working off the same playbook, and it was clear that there was a strategy that was being executed on. And we didn't see that in any other city. There's also a strong case for the talent pool here, that we could get all those positions I just described in this, this location. And, you know, specifically Dublin, like I said, we're in Traverse City. We feel like the offices that, that we have play a big part of our culture. They're in great places. Another one of our offices is just outside Denver in Golden, Colorado, so similar feel. And when we drove into Dublin, we just knew that that was home. And, you know, it doesn't hurt that our CEO's name is McKeel Hagerty, so it's pretty Irish. But, you know, it absolutely felt like the right place, just culturally rich and vibrant community. And so we are just thrilled to be here and really excited to get started and be, you know, hopefully additive to this already great community.
Well, we're real excited to have you. And I can tell you this because I've watched Dana and his staff and Jeremiah and Colleen and all the economic development team. It doesn't end when you open your doors. That relationship just gets stronger and stronger and stronger as you're here. So we want you to become part of the Dublin community, and we want to become part of your company and your success story. So we're really thrilled to have you here. Does council have anything they want to say?
I'm sure Jeremiah mentioned to you the Arthritis Foundation Car Show, perhaps?
Yes, I've heard a lot about it.
So I am just excited to see what you guys do in participating with that, because it's a pretty neat car show already, but it sounds like you might bring resources that would make it a, a regional draw.
No pressure, Chris.
No pressure.
No pressure.
We'd love to do that.
So we would love to make that the greatest car show, you know, that it can possibly be.
Let's do it.
Sounds like you guys are the perfect match for that. And it'll be interesting to see how, as we develop our 33 Smart Corridor of what do we do with, you know, these cars that are classics and are timeless and, you know, are going to be around for a long time because people are passionate about them. And it'll give us a great opportunity to figure out how to integrate that into smart mobility. So that's going to be two fun things.
Yeah, absolutely.
Additional fun things for having you in Dublin.
Do you strictly focus on cars, or are there other kinds of vehicles that you guys are involved?
That's a great question. So we actually started our business with vintage boats. So like, think old wooden Chris Craft boats, and that's still a part of our business today. We insure motorcycles, retired military vehicles, antique tractors, all of those things.
Wow, really cool.
So do you, do you have an event that would fit my 1983 Chrysler LeBaron with fine Corinthian leather?
Absolutely.
It's a beauty. I'm not sure if it's a classic.
It is. I think that's a misconception, that it's all just real high-end elite cars, and it's not. It's those type of cars, because that's special to you, right?
Oh, that's special. We get two looks when we ride that car around. We either get, or we get. Yeah.
Yeah. And there's actually a lot of, and this is something that we could talk about, bringing here, is that there's car shows now for 80s and 90s vehicles. One specifically called Radwood that has a big following, and they actually dress period correct as well. So a lot of fun.
Mullets everywhere.
You're gonna, you're gonna love, we have quite a few best secrets that you may not be aware of. Now that you're here, you'll find out. Not only do we have great classic cars, we even have owners who have condominiums to house their classic cars here. There's a whole condominium association of classic cars in this area. And then antiques, I think, I think the antique thresher, the steam thresher show is huge. That's Plain City. That's just outside our borders. But that, and I believe we also have a Chris Craft boat manufacturer still in the area. So you're going to find all kinds of great secrets, and with the new transportation of 33, will be the most exotic and contemporary of all transportation. So you can grow with us. Yeah.
That's great. We're very excited to have you, Chris. Thank you for coming in. Thank you. Appreciate it. Jenny?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
I need to abstain because we do business with Hagerty.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
There you go. Thank you very much, Chris, for coming. Ordinance 58-19, Jenny?
Determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District.
Jeremiah?
No additional items that we had. However, I'm going to show one particular slide, maybe. There it is. Just for context, as we continue to build these pace projects, just to summarize, 16.4 million dollars of investment and 444,000 square feet of office impacting 1,140 jobs. This is important as we continue to execute our strategy of reinvesting in our legacy office parks. And so this, again, is just a summary of how we have been able to achieve that, and we'll continue to do so with our current and new business owners to help retain jobs and investment in Dublin. So if I have any questions, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none. Jenny?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Ordinance 59-19?
Levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District.
Jeremiah?
No additional comments from.
Any questions from council on this one? Hearing none. Jenny?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ordinance 60-19?
Authorizing and approving an energy project cooperative agreement by and between the city of Dublin, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Inc., OH15 Dublin LLC, Viquest Inc., and the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority, a special assessment agreement by and between the city of Dublin, Ohio, the County Treasurer of Franklin County, Ohio, the Business Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Inc., 525 Metro Place North LLC, Viquest Inc., and the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority and related agreements, all of which provide for financing of special energy improvement projects.
Jeremiah?
No additional comments unless there's any questions.
Questions from council on this one? Hearing none. Jenny?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox? Mr. Keenan?
Ordinance 61-19?
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Avery Surgery Center LLC to induce it to lease a facility to locate an office and its associated operations and workforce all within the city and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
Colleen?
Good evening. I do have something additional since the introduction. I had a phone call this week with Councilwoman Fox to answer some questions about this EDA. So in response to some of her concerns, on pages one and two of the EDA, there is a couple of phrases that are highlighted in yellow, just clarifying with additional terminology the, the terms of the agreement. So none of the terms have changed. They've just been clarified by adding additional language. So again, it's 15 new jobs at the start, and they'll add an additional seven jobs. It would require the construction of a 12,000-square-foot medical facility. And this is with a physicians group that we have been working with. I do have a representative here this evening, Dr. Boris Karen Fielov. I'm going to invite him to the podium, and we can both answer any questions.
Thank you, Colleen. Thanks for having me, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, council members. You ought to excuse me. A little sinus-infected today myself, so I'm going to try to get.
You really should see the doctor.
So I just want to give you a little.
You knew that was coming, right?
Yeah. Treat doctor, treat thyself.
Could I get an address for you, Doc?
Yes, 6655 Plain City, Georgesville Road, Plain City.
Thank you.
And just to give you a brief background, I was born and raised here in Columbus and went to medical school at Ohio State and graduated from Ohio State Ear, Nose, and Throat Residency. And beyond that, did a fellowship in rhinology. So I'm specifically a nasal sinus specialist and actually the, the oldest, most experienced in town. For the last 10 years, I've had very strong collaboration with doctors from the Eye Center downtown at Neal Avenue. And we've been on and off talking with them to form a LLC in order to locate a facility where we could set up an ambulatory surgery center that is complementary to both ear, nose, and throat and eye practices. Many years ago, it was well-known that it used to be eye, ear, nose, and throat. So we do a lot of cases together and have a lot of complementary patients. So after discussing the situation, they're basically at capacity in downtown. And we wanted to situate ourselves somewhere in the northwest quadrant to utilize our referral bases. Plus, I'd say half or more of the physicians live in the Dublin area. So we've, we were narrowing it down to several locations in the northwest area, both Columbus, Hilliard, and Dublin, of course, where we would like to, of course, be. We have two physicians that are extremely busy from Marysville, and they have a large ophthalmology practice there and actually draw all their patients into downtown, and they wanted a more convenient location. So over the last several months, we've managed to get an additional three or four ENTs involved with about 16 ophthalmologists. So what we would like to do is position ourselves in Dublin with a full-fledged Medicare-approved ambulatory surgery center. And we, we feel Dublin would really suit not only the physician locations, but also the, the practice referral patterns, which really extend the entire 33 corridor north to Delaware and definitely go south into Hilliard and Plain City.
That's fantastic. Any questions from council? Yeah, that's really, what's your timeline, Doc?
I'll have to talk to Claudia about that. She knows me pretty well, but we've discussed some things. We're looking at about an 18-month timeline, actually. So now that we have our LLC formed and lease is going into arrangement, we're ready to dive into the pool and get going on this project.
Fantastic. We're thrilled to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Anything else from council? Hearing nothing. Jenny?
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Thank you, Doc, for coming in. Appreciate it very much. Best of luck to you. First reading, public hearing on ordinances, ordinance 62-19, Jenny?
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents and to accept conveyance of a 0.072 acre fee simple warranty deed for right-of-way without limitation of existing access rights from CBJ On High LLC from the property located at 158 South High Street.
Paul?
Members of council, quite simply, this is just the dedication to the city of the public road occupied right-of-way in front of 158 South High Street. We do have a willing property owner, and they're willing to dedicate this right-of-way at no cost to the city. Certainly, we are willing to accept that. Staff recommends adoption of this ordinance at the second reading and public hearing on November 18th. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
I just have one. Is, is the right-of-way or the partial extending all the way to the middle, is that unusual because of the history of that, that particular lot?
Yeah, that was pretty common, that you owned to the center line of a roadway and actually owned the underlying fee itself, although it was a highway easement, which would be the public road occupied part. Typically, now through the platting process, we take right-of-way in fee, and so we have the underlying ownership to the city.
It's just because of the age of that partial?
It is. Yeah, we no longer have that practice of taking property lines to the center of right-of-way.
But what's interesting to me is, is that the house sits across two partials. And you only have the partial, you only, you only have this ownership problem on one, on one half of that, that house.
Yeah, it is interesting.
Okay. So it was given, so the other piece was given to the city years ago.
At some point in the past, yes.
Kind of odd. Yeah. All right. Thanks, Paul.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council? Okay, we'll see you back on November the 18th. Thank you, Paul. Ordinance 63-19, Jenny?
Amending Chapter 35 of the codified ordinances to revise the Fee and Service Charge Revenue-Cost Comparison System and establishing a schedule of fees and service charges for the city of Dublin services.
I will introduce it. Matt?
Good evening, members of council. Ordinance 63-19 is the 19 update to the fee schedule. 2019 is an inflationary update, and next year, the Finance Department will conduct a comprehensive analysis to update the fees for 2021. This year, an inflationary measure of 1.4% was applied to the services provided by the listed departments. In addition to these inflationary adjustments, Finance and the following divisions are recommending some more substantive changes that we'll now examine in a little bit more detail. Staff is proposing a new fee or an increase in, in existing fee to $5,000 related to the legal costs for commercial pace projects. This is an increase from the current fee of $1,000 the city has been charging since the program's inception. Staff is proposing this change in order to more accurately reflect the costs of the city participating in these agreements. It is worth noting that this fee is comparable or less than the legal fees charged by the representatives for the borrowers and the lenders participating in these agreements. And we don't believe that it will create a barrier to participating in these type of agreements. It has been our experience that these agreements are not standard. The parties involved seem to change with every transaction, and the documents therefore change as well. It requires an investment of city time and therefore resources, and we believe this $5,000 fee more accurately reflects the resources that we're putting into these agreements. This fee would not specify a cost recovery, but would rather be periodically reviewed by council. In addition, planning fees are generally receiving an inflationary update, and no new fees are being proposed. But some modifications to existing fees are worth noting. Earlier this year, the Bridge Street Code was modified. The fee schedule needs modified in order to better incorporate some of these changes. Specifically, staff is removing, proposing to remove some fees specific to the Bridge Street District, including the basic plan review, development plan review, site plan review, and the ARB review that references the three above it, essentially. Removing these fees will allow it to better specify services that are comparable to other services provided by planning, such as the concept review plan, preliminary plan review, and the final development plan review. Fees for these services are very closely aligned. There's not a significant change to the fees in making this change. It's also worth noting that we're not modifying the fee associated with minor project review, which is still $0 for properties in the historic district, which is most importantly applicable and directly relevant to small business owners that are requesting planning changes in that area. The Recreation Services Division is also proposing the creation of a new guest pass for resident visitors. This guest pass will allow a DCRC member who is a resident to purchase daily passes in quantities of five or 10 for visits of the residence guests. The current daily pass fee for non-resident guests is $15. So for individuals who are guests of resident DCRC members, the resident member will be able to purchase these passes in the quantity specified for $8 per visit. This program is being proposed to help address some of the concerns and issues raised by residents regarding last year's fee increases. Specifically, it's designed to let resident members who may have a college-age child visiting. Specifically, it's designed to let resident members who may have a college-age child visiting over break, or grandparents and their grandchildren who want to utilize the DCRC facility. Also, last year, we modified the cost recovery policy, so I wanted to provide you an update on that. During our discussion, one of the goals of the policy modification was to increase the dialogue regarding this policy when Recreation was meeting its 50% cost recovery. So this slide and the next slide are a direct result of that increased discussion. The policy now specifies that Recreation's cost recovery is 50% of the operating and maintenance costs, as well as specified costs associated with assigned capital projects. We then assigned the capital costs for the North Pool and the DCRC refresh. At the time, the estimated annual funding required for these projects was $780,000 per year. Our current estimate for the 2019 transfer is around $525,000 per year. Typically, in this situation, staff would be proposing either a modification of the assigned capital costs or an increase in Recreation fees. However, staff are not proposing any fee increases at this time, and this is predominantly for two reasons. First, the ability to renew your membership early impacted cost recovery in 2019. Over 900 passes were renewed in December of 2018, instead of what would have been their anticipated renewal date in 2019. This moved approximately $125,000 in revenue from 2019 to 2018, and decreased 2019 annual membership revenue by about $150,000. Absent this behavior, the estimated transfer for 2019 would have been $675,000. In future years, the increase to annual membership is likely to be less than the 20% implemented last year, hopefully significantly less. So an individual that would renew early would be less motivated to do so. But moreover, even if they did renew early to avoid the fee increases, if an individual were to renew early in December of 2020 to avoid fee increases beginning in January of 2021, the revenue would lead to a larger-than-anticipated transfer in 2020. So we're still going to capture that revenue and transfer it to the Recreation Capital Fund. This year being the first year, the revenue transfer doesn't occur because this revenue was earned in 2018, the last year of the old policy. So this revenue transfer isn't likely to have an impact in future years. The second is that there's a greater-than-anticipated delay in fee revenue increases for the Recreation Program. And that is that services booked in the current year, but provided in the next year, are charged the current-year price. So if you booked a service in December for next March, you're charged the December price. And that delay leads to a loss in revenue essentially from a modeling prediction standpoint. So it's likely that in the future, as cost increases are significantly less than the 20% that we proposed last year, this difference in prices between current year and future year won't have such a great impact, so we won't see the large cost recovery difference. We should finally capture maybe a greater proportion of the 20% increases that were proposed for some of those services this year, next year. But we will continue to monitor that, and if that's not the case, then we'll bring some additional ideas forward. But it's for these reasons that staff are comfortable not recommending any additional fee increases at this time. And I'm available for any questions.
Jenny, if I neglected to introduce that, I will introduce that piece of legislation. Questions from council? Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, it seems to me that the first one you had up, that it went from 1,000 to 5,000.
Yes.
That program is really helping folks do things that need to be done in the community. I don't argue that the 5,000 is not accurate, but it seems to me we could stair-step that over a few years or something. That's just my thoughts on it.
Matt, you indicated that you didn't feel that that was going to impact anything. But when Jeremiah was up, we saw a slide that indicated we have seen $16.4 million of investment over five projects. And we were adding, one of the jobs was to be determined, right? And then we had an additional six that we were going to look at tonight that would also be significant. You know, I'm wondering if we do, you know, six or eight of these a year, and we capture, let's say, $20 million a year in improvements, is that... Are we making a, you know, you said that that isn't providing any barrier, but what makes you think it isn't a barrier?
Well, I think two points to that. One, I don't disagree with you, and if it's your desire to step this up or reduce it, I think it's my job to inform you that this isn't just a pass-through, and to dispel that notion. And then, once we've dispelled that, it's your job to make a decision on the cost recovery appropriate to that. So that's, I think, the first thing to state, is that I just want to dispel that we're not occurring legal fees as a result of participation in this program. But that's really my intent. If we were to try to capture these fees, my suggestion would be a $5,000 fee. But it's wholly appropriate, and we do it in other areas that are specifically development-related, that we subsidize these activities. And if that's the direction that you want to go, that is consistent with your policy. But I think it's consistent for me to bring ideas like this forward, situations like this forward, so that you understand that you are, in fact, subsidizing this.
I couldn't agree with you anymore. It's perfectly appropriate.
That is an important point to make. Do you think it could be more than 5,000, or is that a pretty accurate number for most of these projects?
It's been more than that for, I think, the majority of the projects.
And Chris and I talked about this, and Mike brings it up, and it's an excellent point. I'm wondering if we don't want to incentivize this kind of behavior and say that, "Look, the costs are between $5,000 and $6,000. We'll split it with you. We'll only charge you half of what the estimated legal fees would be." Or step, because if you stair-step it, you're eventually going to get all of it back, right? I mean, you're going to stair-step up to 100%. So if we instead said, "This is the kind of behavior," kind of like the rec center fees, "We subsidize our residents' rec centers." They know how much it costs, and we pay a percentage of it for them. So to Mike's point, maybe we incentivize that by behavior. That's right. You could say, "We'll pay, these are the fees we anticipate for this project, and we will pay 50% of those. You pay the other 50%."
Hey Greg, I think, what does it cost someone to do this in total fees? We're not their only fee, are we? Is this the only fee? So what does it cost somebody to... Maybe Jeremiah knows. I don't know. What does it cost somebody to execute one of these?
Yeah, it's different for every deal, and it's based upon the value, what the assessment that they're putting on. I think I'm getting nods from economic development.
Well, I mean, the question is, what percentage of the pie is this, Greg? I mean, is it $100,000, and ours is $1,000? Is it $20,000? I mean, are we really incenting or disincenting? I'm just wondering what our percentage of the pie is.
I think it depends on how much. I think they're charged a portion of whatever they are borrowing. So the fee is proportionate to the sum.
Almost like a commission.
So if we go back, if we look at that slide back again, I mean...
Well, the minimum to participate in this program is $200,000. So the maximum that this fee would be, would be 2.5% of that. I think when Jeremiah's slide was up there, I saw the minimum project we did was $500,000. So it'd likely be at most 1% of the project's cost, and significantly less for some of those that were more than that.
Yeah. You know, I agree with Mike, and well, I agree with all the council members here. Dana, I would ask you, one of the things that we're looking to do over there is to try to repurpose these old buildings.
Update.
And update. And we don't throw too many incentives that way. And to get already 16-plus million dollars in improvements at a cost of maybe $30,000 in our work efforts, not necessarily out-of-pocket, but in our work efforts, seems to me like a pretty good return on investment. I'd like to hear what you'd have to say about, you know, where you expect to see this go? How many of these buildings do you expect to see happen? Is there a better way to incentivize? Do we do a percentage based on the cost of the services we provide? Maybe not everybody is $5,000. Maybe there's a graduating scale. But I feel like if someone were looking at, if everybody tacked on fees because it cost them this much, we might not see the kind of energy we're seeing.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I don't know that it would be cost prohibitive to them, but at the same time, it's more about the message you send. If you look at the return on investment of what you're doing here, it's significant. It's the same with your facade program, being in historic Dublin, or the one that we will test in the same area next year, if the budget's approved, regarding a facade program in your corporate area, the legacy office parks, which is typically the same area this is coming from. Now granted, a couple of these have been new projects, which is okay, too. So there's a number of ways to slice this. You might say the fee would apply for new projects. Whereas if it's a redevelopment, not a redevelopment, but a rehab, you might say, "We'll waive it." So there could be some different variances on that same theme. I think what we wanted to do tonight was, number one, as Matt pointed out, make sure you're aware of it. Now that we've had this under our belt for a little bit, we understand more so the cost. It's still, case by case, it varies, and some are high, some are lower, but that's what we know so far. We know the return on investment so far, which is great. We know we want to incent this, which is great. So to the point of maybe doing nothing is fine, and then continuing to monitor it. Or, like I said earlier, you might apply it for a new project, or not apply it for someone who's reinvesting in their property. So there's a lot of variations on it.
I like the idea of using a percentage for subsidy, because when we look at the other things that we subsidize in terms of fees, we generally use a percentage. We want to subsidize at 50%, 75%, 25%. That's sort of how we, so it would be consistent with how we would take a look at the other things that we do subsidize. You know, it always feels a little difficult when you go with a flat fee for projects these sizes, because the smaller ones are like, "Geez, I'm paying $1,000," but so is the big giant project, and theirs costs a whole lot more than mine, which is why I prefer a subsidy number, if you will.
Put a motion on the floor, Mayor.
Yep.
All right. I think Matt has a good point, that if they don't know these fees are being incurred. So I think we should show them what the fees are, and then I would suggest that we split it with them. It's a 50%. You guys have to pay 50%, we have to pay, because we're paying 100% now. So I guess I would make a motion to amend the current fee structure as set forth in the memo on this issue to be a 50% subsidy by the city.
Hey Greg, do we know what that cap would be? Just, I mean, in some of these big deals, what would that number be? What would the biggest one, you said? What's the most expensive one we've done to date, Jennifer?
Is it 50% of the $5,000 fee? Is that what we're...
That was my understanding of the motion, but if it's a...
Or 50% of the cost, right?
50%, yeah, 50% of whatever.
So it'd be different for small versus large?
Yeah, whatever the costs are, administrative costs.
Are you going to know that?
That's my issue, is these costs are placed on the settlement sheet and then rolled into the 30-year payment schedule. I might not know the legal costs to get it on the sheet, and if I have to send a company then a separate bill for our legal, then it's not rolled into the financing, and then that will cause...
Is that why it was going to be a flat fee?
That's why it was going to be a flat fee.
Why can't we tie it out to the value of the project, then? $1,000 for X and $2,000 for Y, and so on? Maybe come back with a...
I don't know why we wouldn't just leave it at $1,000, then. We've done five of them. We're talking about not a lot of money.
True.
If we get to the point where it is a lot of money, and if it's more than $20,000, then that probably warrants a discussion. But, you know, we've spent, however, you know, $20,000 in these five that we've done, and we've gotten $16.7 million back.
Not only that, we've spent some funds in our economic development program to help do the inspections that generate these, have we not? So we've helped companies to look at, you know, some of the...
Is it inappropriate to let them know what that number is? I mean, it doesn't have to make it onto the settlement sheet.
We're doing it for this, but it's really that.
Our economic development team tells that.
And we're not going to charge you. It's going to be a 50% or $1,000, whichever.
So why don't we just do that, leave it at $1,000? I think that's a good suggestion. I didn't like the increase to begin with. It's too, if you want to take it to $2,000 or some number. But leave it at $1,000 for the, bang for the buck.
We can always review this again in another year. I mean, we can always take a look at it next year, yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion to leave the current fee at $1,000.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Jenny?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Okay. And Matt, do you have anything else on the ordinance itself, the balance of the fee structure?
No.
Any questions from council?
I had a question on another portion of that.
Sure.
So in the rec center, with the change, maybe we went through a little bit. How much have we added to the fund after the change that we made last year? Because the agreement was, any price increase would go into the fund for future enhancements. What was the...
So we had estimated that we would need to add $780,000 for the two projects. At this point, I'm estimating that the transfer will likely be about $525,000. And that transfer will occur in January of next year, once the year closes and we know what the true cost recovery was.
But you'll continue to get money coming into that fund, correct? Eventually, we'll recover the whole $780.
Correct. At this point, this is the first year, the first transfer, so we're still building that up. I think that's the other point, too, is we have not constructed or incurred expenses for either of those projects to the extent that we will have expenses incurred for the North Pool. Those are about $480,000, and this will cover that. So we will continue to build fund balance over the time that it takes us to begin those other projects. And until we have to do some transfers to this fund to cover those projects, I feel like this fund is, in a sense, whole.
Have we seen a decrease in the total number of ownerships? I know the price went up, but what's happened to sort of volume? What have we seen there? Or has it increased?
No, in fact, really what happened was, if you think about the timing, the implementation of the fee, folks went ahead and signed up their membership early, frankly, to avoid the fee. So we really don't know what it means yet. So we're running a little bit lower because of that. So we really won't feel the impact of that until this next cycle. So we've not seen any decrease in our rec center passes that I've been briefed on, right, Matt? No, we've not seen it.
Volume is staying about what it is.
It's been saying very, very same, very much the same.
Thank you.
I just have one question, another question, but request. On the PACE program, this is our seventh project, and it's been about two and a half years. It would be helpful, I think, for the council to know, as we go into the year, just exactly how much it does cost us? Because we're just kind of guessing the numbers, even though you say $5,000, but it could be worse. We would make it a little bit easier as we go to do the incremental improvements on the fee structure, if we knew, you know, as you go along this year, maybe it's a good year to try to figure that out.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. That's why I want to add it to the cost study, so that it is something that we look at every year. It hasn't been a part of that previously, and we don't have the information because of that, but absolutely.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Thanks, Matt. We'll see you back on November 18th on that as well. Moving on to ordinance 64-19, Jenny?
Adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020.
I will introduce it. Matt?
Good evening, council. Tonight, we're here to present the 2020 operating budget, ordinance 64-19. The development of this ordinance began in August with a budget overview and discussion. Since that time, we've held five committee meetings, two council work sessions, and were scheduled to meet tonight and November 18th for the second reading of the ordinance. The 2020 proposed operating budget before you tonight reflects $95.7 million in operating expenditures, which represents a 7% increase over the 2019 approved budget. The budget can easily be broken down into three categories: personnel costs, which increased 9.2% or $4.8 million over 2019; operating expenditures, which increased 1.5% or 4.1%; and capital expenditures, which decreased $4,000. The proposed operating budget, this year, like others in the past, shows a budget in which operating expenditures are budgeted to exceed operating revenues. For 2020, this variance is estimated to be $2.8 million, on operating revenues of $92.9 million, and operating expenditures of $95.7. For comparison, the 2019 proposed operating budget had a variance of $2.8 million. We utilize fund accounting, tracking the activities of each fund. We generally report the operating budget in terms of our operating revenues and operating expenditures. And when we say that, we incorporate the revenues and expenditures of our general operating funds. It's all of our funds, with the exception of enterprise funds, capital funds, fiduciary funds, internal service funds, and debt service funds. Simply put, the funds on the screen there are the funds that run the day-to-day operations of the city. Many of them, as you can see, are funded in part by transfers from the general fund. As previously mentioned, estimated operating revenues total $92.9 million in 2020, and income taxes continue to provide a majority of our operating revenues. As you are aware, the primary source of revenue is our income tax, in which 25% is dedicated to fund capital improvements. Our current... to provide a majority of our operating revenues. As you are aware, the primary source of revenue is our income tax, in which 25% is dedicated to fund capital improvements. Our current income tax projection for 2020 is 2% over our 2019 revised budget. That is estimated to be $87.5 million, which is the same figure that we've utilized throughout this process. Income tax revenue, just an update. Our actual revenue in 2018 was $88.1 million. We had a revised estimate that was a 3.1% reduction to $85.4 million. We revised that up once to $87.5 million. Our 2020 estimate is $89.2 million. Actual revenues through October are $78 million. This is an increase of 6.2% or $4.5 million over the year-to-date October 2018 revenues. In addition to income taxes, operating revenue of nearly $26 million is credited to these funds from activities such as intergovernmental revenues, fine licenses and permits, charges for services, and other non-income tax-based taxes such as property and gasoline tax, in addition to the city's bed tax. As I stated at the outset, the proposed budget before you tonight reflects $95.7 million in operating expenditures, representing a 7% increase over 2019. As a service organization, personnel costs make up the largest part of our expenditures, with salaries totaling $33.8 million in 2020. From a staffing standpoint, the budget contemplates 416 authorized full-time positions. The components making up the $2.6 million or 8.5% increase are listed on the right-hand side. The 27th pay period is a $1.2 million increase, just on salaries alone. We have wage increases for the union per contract and 2% for non-union employee, the addition of Worthington to our dispatch center with offsetting revenue, a reclassification of the public information officer to a multimedia communication specialist, a reclassification of an economic development administrator to a senior economic development administrator, the addition of a quality control manager with a corresponding reduction of a full-time engineering inspector. In community events, we're creating a full-time events coordinator from two part-time positions. The net new position is an information technology for an information security administrator, and then we have a placeholder of $250,000 in the budget for reorganization costs. Funding for the city's benefit program totals $16.8 million in 2020, which represents a 14% increase over 2019. Slightly less than half of this increase is related to providing health insurance, OPERS, and Medicare to the 10 funded full-time employees added on the previous slide. About $1.1 million of this increase is due to health insurance costs for current employees, and this increase has been driven by a 16% increase in medical claim costs and a 49% increase in stop-loss premiums. You can see there on the right-hand side that the cost of single coverage is going up 11%, while family coverage is going up 14.6%. Operating expenditures total $37.2 million and are broken down into three categories: contractual services, supplies, and other charges and expenditures. Together, these categories are increasing 4.1% over the 2019 operating budget. In contractual services, we are up 3.3% or about $600,000 over the 2019 budget. The main causes for that increase are listed on the slide there. The park director's office is seeing $400,000 in contractual increases related to interchange right-of-way and roundabout enhancements. Information technologies seeking $263,000 additional dollars for a second network rack at the Metro Data Center, as well as the data platform and a security event and management services. Horticulture and forestry are seeking $150,000 for additional off-season contract work, while engineering is seeking $150,000 for connected vehicle study phase two. Finance is seeing a reduction of almost $300,000 for property taxes, and these are specifically related to the cultural, the CAUV program.
Well done.
Supplies are up 2.9%. Engineering, $90,000 for pedestrian crossway equipment replacement and crossway crossing study. Fleet, $60,000 for fuel costs. Streets and utilities, $45,000 for salt. IT, $35,000 for dark fiber. Dispatch, $11,000 for supplies related to the new staff. And the recreation center, specifically the pool, is down $65,000 due to the closure of the North Pool. Other charges and expenditures are up 6.4% or $666,000. $400,000 of this increase is in economic development. $90,000 is in the city manager's office for the ICF summit. $80,000 is in solid waste for the solid waste contract, and then there's some other departments that are seeing some miscellaneous increases. Finally, capital expenditures are basically flat over 2019. There are two additions in forestry and streets and utilities. Again, to summarize, all of these changes together are a $6.2 million increase, or 7% over the 2019 operating budget. Examining the general fund balance, the proposed 2020 operating budget estimates our 2020 fund balance remains in excess of our 50% reserve policy. The proposed 2020 operating budget estimates the general fund to remain $2.4 million above the 50% reserve. Keep in mind, though, that this estimate uses conservative revenue estimates for two years, as well as high estimates of expenditures in 2019 and 2020. This figure of 52.9% represents a very conservative outlook on 2019 and 2020. Our current general fund balance as of the end of October was 83.9%. Additionally, a majority of the decline in fund balance is a result of investment in capital infrastructure related to the economic development agreement with OSU, as the next slide demonstrates. Based on conservative estimates for operating revenues and expenditures, but for this investment and continued economic growth, the fund balance would be 65.5%. To recap, this slide identifies almost all of the estimated changes in revenue from 2019 to 2020, and despite forecasting some revenues down, such as hotel motel and charges for services specifically related to recreation, and being conservative in our estimate as others, such as income tax, fines, licenses, and permits, we were able to estimate an increase in operating revenues of 7% to $92.9 million. Similarly, for expenditures, this slide represents all the cost increases over $6.3 million. As you will recall, the increase in operating expenditures from 19 to 20 discussed earlier was approximately $6.3 million. So the costs on this slide represent the increased costs from the 2019 operating budget. Some of these costs are unavoidable, such as the 27th pay period, while others are entirely discretionary, such as the increase in contractual services related to parks, IT, or economic development. Still, other increases fall somewhere in the middle. This slide identifies the noteworthy cost increases from 2019 and identifies them for any potential discussion. We've had some previous discussion on trends, so this slide takes a look regarding our budget trend. This chart represents actual revenue and actual expenditures dating back to 2008. You can see that our actual revenues have continued to exceed our actual expenditures. Breaking this down a little bit more, the chart shows our history of budgeting conservatively. Actual revenues have consistently exceeded our budgeted revenues, which allow us to operate in an environment of knowing what resources we have available to support our budgetary obligations.
Those last two slides, if you look where they come together, that was the 7, 8, 9 kind of timeframe, and we put a moratorium on payroll. Council acted very quickly outside of what our normal procedures would be, and, of course, then we moved forward again. So we always have the opportunity, counsel, to make any kind of changes we want along the way, just to be clear.
Conversely, our expenditures have been consistently below our budget. We budget as though we'll be able to execute on every project or every process, but for a variety of reasons, this is not likely. Putting them together, the darker lines represent the actuals, green on revenues, red on expenditures, and you can see particularly what Council Member Keenan was referring to in 2009, both those lines changed very dramatically from the budgeted amount to deal with that event. Taking away, this chart goes back to 2006, so it kind of distorts some of the scale. This chart just moves it from 2014 through 2020 to kind of give you a better scale on the right-hand side to see what our costs and revenues have been over this timeframe. I'm available for any questions.
Questions from council?
Mayor, if I, could I just make one more comment here? So first of all, I want to thank city council for all the time and effort put into committee meetings and reviewing this. I know this is the first time our public is probably seeing this, you know, and that's why we want to go over the presentation and review all of that. And certainly, this is a lot of the culmination of your participation in that, in the dialogue and exchange that we've had about the budget process and preparation of the budget for 2020. So I just want to make sure to point that out, and we greatly appreciate all the time and effort that you all put in to this process.
Kathy?
Thank you. Matt, could you go back to the last slide that you just prepared? Thank you. And I appreciate you're doing this. I mean, one of the discussions that we've had during a variety of these workshops is really looking at trends. So are revenues and expenses sort of growing in lockstep, or are we seeing some disconnects? Hopefully, not major shifts in the economy necessarily, but some of those. And I guess, and I appreciate that, and one of the questions that I think is important for me personally, when I'm looking at this budget, and we looked at those prior couple of slides where we looked at maybe some one-time increases in revenue, perhaps for sales of property, and one-time increases or anomalies like the 12th pay period, and really looking at what is the trend line of our expenses. Just to be clear, for my sake, these do not exclude sort of one-times, right? This is, this is, this is as presented in the-
Correct.
I think it would be important, and again, a request that I had at the last operating, is that we look at this really to look at some of those one-time, and we had a very good dialogue at the last meeting about what some of those were. Because what I would say concerns me, and I say this not because we're not in good fiscal shape, but I look at that green line staying flat, and I look at that red line approaching the green line. And some of this gets hidden by one-time things, and that's what gets confusing about this. So what I would request is a presentation of this particular chart with those puts and takes on both sides, so that we really can see. I took a few minutes based on these, and I appreciated of the last couple of slides, and I looked at sort of the actual expenditures over, say, about the same timeframe, actually, 14 to 18. And pretty much annually, the expenses are rising about $4 million a year, give or take $1 million. And again, there's puts and takes in that, but if you look at that line. And as you can see by the revenue, it's staying fairly flat. We're anticipating a bump in 19. But that kind of a trend continues that we're going to cross those lines here pretty soon. So I would like to see that other chart and making sure that the trend lines, that we're not putting forth a budget that gets us in that situation. And again, that is a bit concerning to me. The good news is, as has been pointed out, we're not spending the budget, we're below the budget. So, you know, for me, one of the questions I continue to ask myself is why we're not setting the budget based on actual history plus some growth, not prior budget plus some growth, particularly in this KPI environment. So I would appreciate, for me personally, seeing that, and sort of the two requests, one, the same chart with sort of the one-time puts and takes. This chart being one-times and puts and takes, I got to say for 19 and 20, just to be sure, I'm not asking for a historical, I'm looking for a trend line go-forward. And we reviewed that last time, and I think we agreed we could do that. And the second would really, what would the budget ask be if we were looking at the increase over actuals? Do we have an estimate about what the expense actuals for 19 are going to be? Do we have an estimate on, I mean, we have a revised estimate-
Can you restate that question again?
Yeah, we have a revised estimate for what do you think revenues are going to be for 19? Do we have an estimate about what the expense side of the house is going to look like for 19?
No, no, I don't, Matt, we don't at this point.
No, we don't have, yeah.
I'd like to circle back on one of your, on your request. I'd like to hear from council where you put your estimate on revenues going forward, because if I'm going to draw a line on actuals or-
I didn't hear your comment.
I'm going to put a line on expenditures based on your question. We can do that. I'd like to hear council's thoughts based on all of our dialogue and the economic development situation, and the agreements that have been put into place this year and so forth, where you would put growth, revenue growth next year. What would be your estimate on revenues?
I can ask my opinion. I would say if you, the current revenue estimate that you put forth of, I'm going to get that number, $92 million, is that right?
92.9.
Yeah. $3 million, that, 3.3 million is a land sale, OSU land sale, is that roughly right? So taking three out, you're saying revenue estimate somewhere around $89 million is what you're proposing from all funds except for that one property sale, right?
I guess I'm more asking about where do you think income tax revenues will be going forward, from your vantage?
I'm saying that's why I'm taking that. So you're estimating, again, flat revenue, pretty much, right? That's what you're saying here.
I thought when we talked about this retreat, we had, we set a goal. You know, I'm still hopeful that we're going to meet the goal that we set. You know, some of the economic development deals that have been contemplated and have been discussed, it looks like that's going to be a possibility. But I think we were at 4%, 3% growth was what we committed to.
3% was your goal?
3% at retreat, and I guess that would be my projection, that we would meet the target that we set for ourselves.
But the budget put forth is, if you take out that land, is a pretty flat budget. It isn't a 3% growth rate. I mean, you're projecting a pretty flat revenue number, right?
We're projecting 2% up our revised 19 budget. So our 19 estimate is 87.4. We projected 2% growth in 2020 to get us to 89.3. I think that's still-
But we were at 6%. The revised 18 increased 6.2? What was that number?
Yeah. We are currently up year-to-date.
6.2?
6.2.
So, which is about a percent or so over actual last year, not 3%. I mean, growth over actual is what we were aiming at, right? Not growth in a budget, but growth, actual-
Right. And we were talking actual numbers. I think that was the intent.
Yeah.
Correct.
So actual revenue 18 was 88?
88.1.
And we're expecting it-
We projected down in 19 originally. We're still below from our revised estimate for 18. It didn't seem necessary at this point in time to increase our 19 budget. There's two months left. We're not going to make any operational decisions based on increasing that at this time. Our 2020 estimate of 89.3 roughly is probably conservative, which is where we like to be, so that's why we continue to keep it there. At this point, you know.
But actual 18 versus actual 19 through October is up 6.2% over actuals.
Correct. If we continue, if we have the same November-
I'm just looking here, your 2019 revised estimate, you're saying it's going to be 87 million.
The 2019 revised estimate is 87.5. We haven't changed that.
It's exactly that, a revised estimate.
But what are you estimating it will be? 89?
89.2 is the current estimate.
For 2020.
For 20.
What is your estimate today for 2019?
If, if November and December come in identical to 18, I would estimate we'd be in $92 to $93 million in 2019 in income tax.
I'm not willing to make that bet.
Exactly. That's why I try to not say that.
So I think when we talk about growth for next year, we need to have a solid estimate about what we think this year's going to be.
Well, a solid estimate is an estimate, and that's about as solid as I feel like I can get. The reason I'm asking you all is, where do you think we're going to be? Because it's, I'm doing the best I can, and I'm staying very conservative. And I'm staying relatively flat on revenue because we're adjusting accordingly. I still feel, at the end of the day, as we have traditionally, and the reason, and I know it's hard to get my head wrapped around, too, when I've been taught in public administration, balanced budgets. But we talk about estimating our expenditures higher than revenues because what the maximum effect is that we may have, and then we manage it on a day-to-day basis to make sure that we're not exceeding that based on the revenues that we're taking in. That's sometimes hard to get your head around. But at the end of the day, the reason we put that past actual in is because we tend to average probably 8% to 10% of the budget unspent. And that's, I do bank on that a lot for coming out, coming out at the end of this in a very good fiscal position, just because we really estimate those expenditures high. So we can go back and put that trend line you asked on there, but I'm just trying to point out that this is all estimating, and we're trying to do the best we can with that.
Sure, but I'm just looking at trending in actuals. So to your point, as long as we're going to stay tracking at eight or 10, but each year for the last several years, our expenses have grown at a pace double what our revenue's grown. So that's why I want to see that trend line, because we're seeing expenses grow four to five million a year, just based actual to actual, and revenues just haven't.
Yeah, and we can draw that line. I guess the key thing to understand, as we pointed out in the last discussion we had, is you remove those, what we really believe are those one-time hits. Every year, every budget cycle has one-time hits. That's what we're managing. But on the growth of the base, I think we'll show that we'll look even better with that. Now, the other thing that we didn't caveat this discussion with to our public who may be watching this for the first time and not privy to our dialogue was that we do know, you know, as Matt pointed out...
Works at the dialogue.
We are in the business of services, so our highest cost is our personnel. I appreciate your consideration of some of the reorganization effort, the succession planning, those, all that dialogue that we've had, it's been very robust and good. So I appreciate your consideration of that. The other thing, too, that I want to make sure we pointed out is that the growth in our healthcare benefits, even though we've been, we have been self-funded for the most part over the years, and compared to traditional medical programs, ours is, we've saved a lot of money, millions of dollars compared to traditional programs. But the 16% rate of growth is high, and we went through all the reasons why that's really the case. But what we did agree to, and I want to make sure, point this out, is that we agreed that we would have that dialogue next year about what to do with that, with an end date of June 1st, to address that next year for the 2021 budget, so.
I think it's important, as the public looks at this, a couple of things. These charts that show the budgeted, the actual, and the explanation that you offer simplifies for our public how we watch this. I think that's first and foremost the most important, because these are complex numbers. It's very difficult to look at a spreadsheet and to figure out whether or not you're being conservative, whether or not you're meeting your estimates. This is really important, and it's also important, as Kathy says, for the rest of us, that as we go forward and we make our decisions, each one independently over a year's time, you have the opportunity to watch these lines. You have an opportunity to simplify these decision-making times that where you don't want to get too close, because there's a larger buffer in '13, '14, '15, and '16 between actual revenue and actual expenditures. I just think it's important that we continue to utilize these charts to help ourselves, right? And the other thing that I think is important for the public to know is that the council has identified quite a few things in their goals, in their yearly goals. Doing some extra work in the parks, bringing maintenance, you know, with contractual services, a little extra help to get some of the natural environment that everybody values here to looking good again. The economic development that keeps these revenues high. We're putting funds towards that. Sometimes you have to spend money to make money, right? But I think it's the two things. I would hope that the citizens can see that this council is very aware of how much money we're spending, and we're watching it like we're coupon-cutting at the grocery store in so many ways. I think it's important that they know that, but they also know that as these expenditures go up, it's because we have decidedly said this is where we're putting the money. So I think for, on my part, to the citizens of the city, we're watching these lines. We're very careful. You're very conservative. The explanations are transparent. The charts are here. The goals are set, so let's just see what happens. I think that's the best we can offer.
You know, if you look at these trend lines in this slide that's up there right now, council took action in 2010, and if you look at the budgeted revenue, we sharply decreased it. And that was at council's direction and staff's direction as well, consistent with being very conservative on our revenue and very liberal on our expenditure side, and you can see what happened there. So we reacted very quickly in '08, '09, and weathered that, and all part of that conservative nature. So, and then you can see the actual revenue really rebounded much quicker than we allowed in terms of our budgeting process. I mean, to me, that whole actual versus budgeted, whether it be revenue or expenditures, we've been very consistent. And you want a trend, that's a trend over, you can look from '06 on. The only time it got impacted heavily was in the economic downturn, and of course, the tax revenues decreased because of the economy. So I am very comfortable with what we've done and what we're doing. I don't think there's any issue going forward. The bond rating companies continue to give us the highest regard and the highest ratings. And they look at this through the eyes of financial people that do this for a living each and every day in their lives, so, anyway.
And to your point, Mike, I think what is interesting is in 2008, '09, '10, of course, the council looked at this chart and said, okay, what's this telling us? And I think what's important for us to look at is, as they're getting closer to crossing each other than they have in quite some time, what is that telling us? That is the question I'm asking. And I think some of this are one-time activities, et cetera, and that's the reason I'm asking the question, because just as when they became closer, there were issues, there was action. I'm saying, as they're becoming close to each other, I think we have to ask the questions. Are those trend lines going to continue? Today, in this question about revenue growth, we know it's happening expenses, they're growing pretty steadily. So I think it's important, for that very reason, that we're having this conversation. And if there are one-times, and you say we correct for those, we're feeling good about that, that's what I'm asking for, because I think that is exactly what we should be doing, is using these to ask those questions, and I think that's what we are doing, and I think that's really important.
Yeah, it's a great question, and we'll get that best estimate to you. I just, I appreciate you humoring me on my question about revenues, just because, you know, we can all have different opinions on that, and I want to make sure I wasn't, you know, assuming too much or too little. So I was just trying to get a feel for where you all might be on that, but I appreciate your feedback.
So Kathy, I think it's a really fair question, and I think that part of our job, as we roll into this next year, particularly through Finance Committee, is to be reviewing these on a regular basis. I think we now have a very stable financial system. If you'll recall, there was the whole changeover in systems, which was hard to get some of these pictures out of the old system. Now that we have them, we can repeat them throughout the year and look at that trend throughout the year. So I think that's a really great point, and I think that should be the expectation of council, is to be reviewing these throughout the year at each of those committee meetings.
Okay. Anything else? Well, Dana, just very quickly, Matt, thank you for all of your work. And, you know, this budget represents every single corner of this operation that you are running. Every department head, every employee is reflected in this budget, and you guys put a tremendous amount of effort into it. And it's really extraordinary when you look at the growth. I mean, just this chart alone, the growth over the last 15 years that this community has gone through, and those lines still have not crossed. It is really extraordinary, and you have an absolutely fantastic staff, and Matt, you have done an excellent, excellent job putting this together for us, and I'm very proud of my fellow council members and all the work. A lot of work that goes, a lot of work, probably more than any, maybe other than the CIP, but this document, more work is put in it by more extremely bright, hard-working, dedicated people than anything else in this community. So I think Mike's right. This shows you the history of our community and that dedication that's been there for quite some time, even back, you know, for the last more than two decades. So I appreciate all that work.
Thank you. Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Okay, so does everybody have what they need and asked what they want to ask before we talk about this again on November the 18th? Okay, thank you, Matt. We will move along. Ordinance 65-19, John?
Amending various sections of ordinance 1517, compensation plan for non-union personnel.
I will introduce it. Homer?
Hey. Good evening, council. Ordinance 6519, amending the non-union compensation plan as a companion ordinance to the operating budget submitted for 2020 that we just got done talking about. In that, it establishes the various new positions and reclassifications that were briefed during, by the city manager and the directors during the various council committee meetings and workshops. It also facilitates a reorganization of the city by creating a new pay grade of 1.2, which will fall between the current pay grade of 2.1, where the department directors are currently graded, and the pay grade assigned to the city manager of 1.0, which will also change to 1.1. Finally, there is an update proposed to add clarity to the process by which non-union employees may cash out sick time if departing employment with the city in good standing. Subject to your questions, staff recommends approval at the next council meeting on November 18th.
Thanks, Homer. Any questions from council? Hearing none, we will see you on November 18th. Thanks, Homer.
Very well, thank you.
Ordinance 66-19, John?
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Renaissance Tech LLC to induce it to purchase a facility to retain and expand its corporate headquarters and its associated operations and workforce, all within the city, and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
I will introduce it. Sarah, welcome.
Good evening, members of city council. I'm pleased to present a development agreement tonight detailing Dublin-based IT company Renaissance Tech's expansion of their corporate headquarters in Dublin. They were founded in 2013. They're one of our success stories out of the Dublin Entrepreneurial Center. They later moved to historic Dublin and then at 5880 Venture Drive where they reside today. The company is interested in purchasing a new office location to support rapid growth and increase their hiring capacity in the area. The economic development agreement proposed is a one-time retention grant of $10,000 in consideration of the company's investment commitment. The incentive is contingent upon the company purchasing a building within the city's corporation limits of at least 8,000 square feet by January 1st, 2020. Additionally, the company is required to obtain an occupancy permit. The project retains 16 existing employee positions within the city, and the company also expects to create nine additional employee positions by the end of 2021, so 25 total. And the city anticipates more than $75,000 in net withholdings over the next three years.
Any questions from council?
Just one real quick question. It's for legal. The retention grant does not really require the nine new, does it require the nine new jobs to be? The retention grant is given when the facility is purchased and the jobs are retained. Is that correct? Just, I'm just clarifying for myself.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So the nine are expected but not required?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you. We'll see you back on November 18th. On to the resolutions. Good news, we've already done 59-19, so we're moving on to resolution 60-19.
Establishing a Dublin Veterans Committee.
I will introduce it. Dana?
Yes, good evening, members of council. So staff recommends passage of resolution 6019, forming a veterans committee. As per the staff report accompanying the resolution, a veterans committee did formerly exist. While this committee did a terrific job resulting in the grounds of remembrance, its purpose was limited to that project only, and several of its members are no longer available. As per some discussion that we've had with you, it seems most appropriate to establish a veterans committee on a more permanent basis than we have in the past, given the contributions of our veterans to all that we discussed this evening, and given the timing here with Veterans Day, I thought it would be most appropriate to establish this committee tonight, if you feel so compelled. Further, staff has received comments from the public with new and additional ideas for veteran recognition at both the grounds of remembrance and in our cemeteries and other locations throughout the city. The purpose of this committee is not to replace or in any way disrupt the great work currently provided on Memorial Day and Veterans Day, as well as the representation that we have from our veterans and our parades and the Military Roundtable that's been so successful at our rec center. Instead, this committee is intended to support such efforts as needed and to provide a means to assess and advise on ideas being advanced to the city and to monitor and advise council and staff on veterans issues, generally speaking. So this resolution addresses the composition, term, duties, and functions, reporting requirements, and initial committee appointments. These are staff recommendations and certainly subject to your consideration and any other suggestion or suggestions that you might have. I would further just explain this notion of giving you sort of a partial list of appointees, the idea there being that the committee would be initially formed, and as it mentions, within 60 days, come back with a recommendation on the chair and vice chair. The chair and vice chair may be members from the community at large that are veterans, or maybe from the appointees themselves, and in which case, if it were the appointees, then they would advance replacements for themselves. So at the end of the day, you really wind up with a committee that consists of at least six veterans, plus the appointment from post 800, which would also be a veteran. And then, we did mention in here the representation from township, Washington Township trustee, if they so desire to participate, and then also a city council member, if you desire to have someone serve on the committee.
You know, I would add, I chaired the committee that did the grounds of remembrance. We had a big group of people. You've noted here that the chair should be a veteran in any branch. I guess that could be a council person that is a veteran, but there's money expended here, and it's, you know, to the extent of really being able to bring everybody together and also understand the role of council. Anytime we spend money, it seems like you should have a council person chairing that. Maybe that's ill-advised, but I know it made a big deal difference on the grounds of remembrance in terms of how we kept everything moving forward, and we were spending a fair amount of money on that. John, you remember, we were on the committee together. So that's just some input from experience.
I think in this case, what probably serves more like an advisory committee is to get it more in more of a, what I would call a more normal situation that councils had, be it a task force or advisory committee, who typically do appoint a chair or vice chair from among themselves. I think in the case you're talking about, and I got to participate on that as well, when I got home from deployment, I kind of got in the back end of it. It was a very exciting and a hard-charging project to get done. Obviously, the results speak for themselves, and that was one where, yeah, a lot of money was allocated. In this case, all recommendations per the resolution come back to council. They're vetting ideas that are brought forward. There's no expenditure of anything here, other than bringing ideas back to council or making reports to council, at which time you could choose to act on them or do other things. So very much an advisory kind of a role.
I saw monuments, suggestions from the public relative to other monuments, et cetera. So when I read that, I kind of, I wasn't really sure if you were looking for other kind of projects, the scope of grounds of remembrance, probably not, but, so I'm good if you think that's okay, so.
However you all want to proceed, that's...
I think it's great, Dana. I want to say thank you for, I know you already had this sort of in the works, and then I approached you with making that happen before the end of the year, so I really appreciate your attention to it.
Any other comments? So we would be creating the body with these A1, A through J seats, and then we're also appointing specific individuals to some of those seats, but not all, to allow this to get off the ground, to get started, and then let them to become sort of self-sufficient.
That's correct.
Okay.
And just as an aside, Washington Township trustee, newly to be elected tomorrow, Jan Rozansky, obviously would be the obvious choice from the township, given his commitment.
Could be.
That'll be theirs to bring forward.
So we would leave that up to them, but then the, so then the final question would be whether we want to insert a council member's name in here?
If you desire to be on that, then I would recommend that you do that, yeah.
According to Mike, he thinks it's a good idea that we be on there.
I think it's a good idea. I mean, we have liaisons to lots of different things, and certainly, this is among the most important.
Okay, does anybody want to volunteer themselves to serve?
I'll volunteer.
I was going to say, I think we should probably run on that end.
John has volunteered. I would, do we need to make a motion to put his name on there?
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion that we insert John Reiner's name after section 4I.
I'll second that.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And on the resolution itself.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Yellow area. The city will retain ownership of the public park and the open space and be responsible for its upkeep and its maintenance. Subarea B1 is the area, it's kind of pink, I guess, on that screen, that runs along, parallel to France Road. And that area is approximately six and a half acres. And it will, we estimate that there will be about 47,000 square feet of restaurant and retail space there. Subarea B1 also includes a public plaza space at each of those street corners and the streetscape landscaping along France Road, as well as a landscape walkway that leads pedestrians from the public right-of-way along France Road to the public park that's located interior to the site. The public plaza space and streetscape landscaping will be publicly dedicated but maintained by the owner of the private development and those parcels. The landscape walkway will be owned and maintained by the owner of the private development parcel, but will also be subject to a public access easement. Subareas B2 and B3 are the green and purplish blocks that you see there. Those are dedicated for office space. The B2, which is the green area, is approximately 1.48 acres. And the purple area, B3, approximately 1.69 acres, just slightly larger. Those will be two built-to-suit office pad sites that can hold footprints of approximately 12,000 square feet each. The total improvements, private improvements, that are estimated for the project are 15.4 million, and the total project cost to the city for the park and all required improvements are approximately $3,365,000. The next two slides will further illustrate that breakdown, as you see here. So the expectation is that Daimler will begin build out of the site, which is the area B1, closest to France Road, and that's supporting infrastructure in year 2020, with approximately $3 million worth of improvements in 2021, $4 million of improvements in 2022, and approximately $3.4 million worth of improvements in 2023, to total the $10.4 million minimum project value. Thus, the city would be receiving property taxes on the full valuation of the improvements beginning in year 2024. We've taken a conservative approach when calculating the TIF, as the build-out of the office pads have not been figured into that calculation in that financial scenario. So we're basing the annual service payment on the $10.4 million property valuation only. And Matt will be going further into detail on that in future slides. The city agrees to transfer ownership of subareas B1, B2, and B3, and this is proposed in the development agreement, to the Daimler Group upon council approval of the final development plan. The property transfer and development agreement and the infrastructure agreement. Should Daimler Group desire to transfer any piece or portion, however, of B1, B2, or B3 to an entity other than an affiliated holding company and/or an LLC of the Daimler Group, however, they will be required to obtain approval of an amended final development plan and obtain the lot split for a project on that site. Applications for development projects must proceed through and be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission to confirm that the final use and users and the square footage is meet the minimum requirements of the project and support the overall development of the site. The conditions, as shown, indicate that if the Daimler Group should transfer ownership of the property prior to 20 years from the date of transfer from the city, they will be required to reimburse the city for costs incurred for the land and associated legal expenses on a per-acre basis, as calculated here. Should areas B1, B2, and B3 remain undeveloped for a period of 10 years from the date of transfer, then ownership of B1, B2, and B3 will revert back to the city. The developer has estimated the private investment for Subarea B1 of the proposed project at $10.4 million. Staff estimates that the $5 million in additional private investment in Subareas B2 and B3 when the office pads are developed and when they occur, those additional office development portion of the site is uncertain, however, and therefore not factored into the financial calculation, as I mentioned previously. In coordination with the EMHNT, the city will design and the Daimler Group will construct a public park in Subarea A, which was the yellow portion of the map, and associated public improvements for the remaining subareas at a cost of approximately $3.365 million pursuant to an infrastructure agreement between Daimler and the city. With that, I'll ask Matt Stifler to step up.
So the estimated project cost for the city for park and all required public improvements is $3.365 million, with an additional $530,000 in developer financing cost. Based upon our current estimates, the city expects to apply $1.6 million of cash on hand in the Rings France TIF to pay the monthly construction draws. The developer would provide upfront funding for the balance of $1.765 million. The city would then make reimbursement payments to the developer of approximately $230,000 per year for 10 years. And this annual payment is expected to be funded from the Rings France TIF and the new TIF on the project site, as the next slide illustrates. Walking you through this. The $3.365 million is funded. There's the $1.6 million cash on hand from the Rings France TIF, the developer's contribution. This first column here identifies the public, or I'm sorry, the private improvements on the site totaling a $10.4 million. In order to facilitate the reimbursement payments of approximately $230,000 per year, the following transfers would be needed from the Rings France TIF, and the new TIF on the parcel would make the following payments as well. A total of three, just over $3 million would be needed from the Rings France TIF over the next 11 years, and a total of $846,000 would be needed from the new TIF on the parcel. In addition to these payments, the new TIF on the parcel at the end in years 12 through 30 would generate $130,000 per year, leaving it with a fund balance at the end of its life of about $2.5 million. This project would have no impact on the 2020 to 2424 CIP, as it uses all TIF dollars that are currently unallocated for any project, and it would not have the city issuing any additional debt to construct this project.
So I guess this is my slide. So just to recap, so these are, you know, these are the different things that we would need approvals on from city council if you chose to move forward on this. There'd be a development plan, the rezoning of the parcel, modifications to the existing TIF, the creation of a new TIF, and then the resolution to accept preliminary plat, ultimately. So this is really just pending on tonight's discussion, your questions and so forth. And I think I, I think there's a slide, is there a slide there of questions? These were just some thoughts that we had. You know, do you concur generally with the idea of the site as proposed? I mean, as you know, we've kind of had this discussion about trying to provide amenities to the area as part of the Dublin Corporate Area Plan, trying to create an effect for the legacy office park, as well as balancing that against the input and the needs of the neighborhood close by. Does council understand the proposed terms of development agreement, what questions and so forth, or guidance might you have about that? And any guidance on the fiscal terms themselves? And then generally, what might be the next steps? So, and of course, any other questions you might have. That was our best guess at trying to advance the discussion. Yeah, again, the other thing I, just one thing I would add, I apologize, is this notion of leveraging the developers' dollars to build the park initially. You know, that's not necessarily unusual. Couple of things I'd point out. First of all, when we do residential-type development, green space is required to be dedicated, and then the city builds the parks. In commercial areas, there's no history, other than the city acquiring green space and building parks associated with commercial properties. It is not typical of the developer at all to come forth and have to dedicate the ground and build the green space and the park on it. So the big assumption here is the city would take that responsibility, as it always has. So then that sets up the problem of, okay, how do you go about that if that's what you want to do? So that, and there have been times, too, when developers have built roadways and the city's paid them back, as an example. So it's not unusual to have the developer advance that and then be paid back. So that was just sort of the straw man approach on this, to have the dialogue going forward. There could be any number of other ways, if you wanted to, to approach that.
Well, I mean, I guess I'll go first. For me, it seems like it is a plan that has evolved into the perfect plan. I mean, there's been a ton of neighborhood feedback, and Paul and the people at Daimler have been very receptive. And Jane, I know you've been going to all kinds of meetings at this, and I'd like to hear your comments. It seems to me this is exactly what TIF dollars are supposed to do. They're supposed to encourage and facilitate further development that we would like to see. And the TIF dollars are there, and it looks like a fantastic idea. And I really appreciate everybody's hard work and patience in getting to this point, where everyone seems to be moving in the direction that they can live with. Jane?
I agree with you. I think one of the things that's so important about this particular project is that this is the beginning doorstep for what we hope to happen all along France Road. It's also a notable project that will kickstart, we hope, the renewal of the Metro Blazer area. I think, I commend the Daimler Group. I think that they listened to what the residents had to say. I think for a project of the size that we're looking at at Decap, you need to have buy-in by everybody in the community. You have to have buy-in by the developers, buy-in by the city, who is willing to go ahead and produce an amenity like this that will maybe bring people there, and buy-in by the residents and the citizens that sees that when we decide to redevelop a large area, that we're going to do it with the kind of quality they expect. The Daimler Group has put some wonderful things in the city, and we wouldn't expect anything less than that. And the listening that they've done to try to bring this to a consensus that everybody's happy with is great. I'm particularly pleased by the uniqueness of the architectural style that speaks to the field of corn. One of the things that I actually love about this, and I think that using TIF money for green space here, it's aesthetically attractive, that's great. From France Road, we're going to see some renewal of freshening up of the streetscape. But if any of you ever drive around metro area during lunchtime, you'll see a lot of people walking with nowhere to go. They have nowhere to go. They just walk because they have a walking path. The layout of this particular design actually draws you to it. It draws you to the commercial use. It gives you someplace to walk to. It gives you someplace to sit and have your lunch. It can be the front porch, too, the new development, I think. I'm very pleased with it. I think it's a good use of TIF money. One of the things that I hope that Planning and Zoning will do is find ways, in working with our landscape architect, to really make that green space very usable, because there is this mass of parking that's there at the end of the backside, the west side of the ponds. So it has to be landscaped well enough that it's attractive, you don't feel like you're just walking around a ditch, right? But I'm really happy with it. I think that residents will be very happy with it, too.
Anybody else? Kathy, you got any?
I know this has been a lot of work on everybody's part, and the Daimler Group has really partnered with the community, and the community has partnered with the Daimler Group and the staff. And I just think, I think it's a really positive step forward. I, too, agree with Jane that I hope it sets a model for what can happen here and what we hope does happen here. So I applaud that, and I think it's a very, a very good project. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. John, anything?
No, I think I'm pleased to see the apartments are pulled out, and I think it increases the overall viability of the community as far as sort of commercial interest and people wanting to come down there and utilize it. So I couldn't see the benefit of that, those particular units on this project.
Michael?
I think it'll help our neighbor to the, what would that be, to the west immensely, and I think it's something they want, and I think that's a real value to this project as well, so.
Thanks, Mike. Christina?
I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. It's gone through several iterations. I particularly appreciate the community plan focused detail, because I think that is one of the key parts to making any development really meaningful for the community. So I'm excited to see what they have as they bring more details forward.
Chris?
I am still hopeful that we find a really suitable home for our fishing derby that happens on the Fourth of July. And I think that this might be a great spot for it. There'll be a lot of parking there, and, you know, I hope that we put the attention into making these ponds viable ecosystems. So I am looking forward to programming this park. I think it's in the right spot, and I think it would just be a wonderful opportunity to open this park. And, you know, I've been to those fishing derbies a number of times around the rec center, and that pond really isn't very conducive for that, and hopefully this will be the home.
What do you think, Paul Godati? Will you have a fishing derby there?
Sure.
All right. You know, and I would echo Christina's, I mean, there was a lot of stick-to-it-iveness on Daimler's part from the first drawing, that there was a lot of work to get from there to here, and we really appreciate. And there's a Daimler project, isn't the Preserve a Daimler project, right? Just catty-cornered to this. So there's a whole corridor of Daimler Groups, and I agree, it's an extremely high-end product that we know you will continue to.
Mayor, is there a, you would know this, Jane, is there a crosswalk from Waterford across there at that light?
There is a crosswalk at the corner of Rings and France.
I think we need to just think about that, so people from Waterford can easily get over there, because that could be a nice.
Right, no. There is not.
The rest of the watching stuff down in.
There isn't one from Waterford, no. No, but there is from Rings and France, which is kind of, that's a big open field, so it's not like there's a lot of people going to be at that corner. That's a good point, Mike.
Well, Dana, is that enough feedback? Do you want me?
That's great. I appreciate that. We'll advance the, at the next two council meetings, then the legislation to go along with all of this. So really appreciate that a lot. Also wanted to thank Greg Daniels, who, here tonight, for his time and help, special legal counsel, working on economic development matters, public finance. So thank you all for that.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Thanks, Paul, for stopping in. Community Plan Refresh. Jenny Rousch.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. In your packet, we included a memo that outlines what we would entail as what we're calling the Community Plan Refresh. So as I'm sure you all recall, as part of your retreat at the beginning of this year, this was a topic that was discussed, how to look at the community plan and determine what needed to be updated or modified as we continue to move forward. So staff, including planning, engineering, and finance, looked through and sort of did an audit of our existing community plan and outlined for you, based on each chapter, what things have occurred over the past six years since this was adopted in 2013, what we would anticipate either needing to happen or data that we're waiting for, as well as then a proposed timeframe to begin this work overall, and then how we would anticipate tackling each of these various chapters, because as you'll see, they sort of build upon each other. And then whether there's some additional costs or budgetary things that we need to take into consideration as we move through this process, as well as sort of our staff capacity, and given our workload, how we think that's going, how we're going to work through that. So in the memo, as I mentioned, we went through each of those 11 chapters that the community plan includes and provided that analysis for your review. And I'll just go through those briefly. I don't have a real formal presentation. The community plan was adopted in this most recent version in 2013. It's a web version only, so if you want to print things, we have that capability. But it's meant to be very interactive for the users. And obviously, the community plan providing that overall natural and built environment policy, how we're moving forward, so it's incorporating, you know, land use, transportation, community facilities, sort of our building blocks, pieces, historic preservation, demographics, all of that, with the culmination, then, of our implementation steps and how we go forth and implement this plan as we move forward and review those as part of the development process. So overall, our anticipated, or overall, our overall assessment doesn't really anticipate a major update, as we did in 2007, where we pretty much did a complete overhaul of that. We're not seeing that that is necessary at this point, because over the past six years, we've done incremental updates, whether it's through land use, sort of the special area plans. Engineering has also done some work over the years with the travel demand model, as well as sewer updates. So in the end, it's really looking at each of these various chapters and making sure that the things we have been doing along the way get implemented and incorporated and reviewed in a really more consistent, comprehensive way. So with that, I'll go through each of these chapters, and again, I'll try to do it briefly, just so that you all understand what we looked at and what we're thinking here. So the first three chapters, when you look at the community plan, are really those building block chapters, so introduction, foundation, character, so really defining sort of what's our vision, using our existing characteristics and looking at that. So ultimately, nothing has been updated with those first three chapters over the last six years, again, because we're really feeling like, based on council's direction and projects that have been moving forward, we're being fairly consistent. Obviously, we want to be reviewing that and make sure that that continues to align as we move forward. So we would anticipate looking at those three chapters together and making sure that still aligns. That's definitely something that could be handled at a staff level. And this would be, as you will notice in your memo, obviously, we were looking at these chapters, I reviewed them in order, but we're going to go through them, and our recommended approach would be to sort of take them out of order. But we would really begin with these, because these first three chapters really sort of set up that framework for the plan and the vision of the city. So that's, those first three chapters, as I mentioned, would be just reassessing with council. And as you'll see as well, for each of these, we really were looking at some type of council work session, and we would pull in Planning Commission and ARB or any other groups that you feel are necessary to look at as we move forward with that. Chapter four is the land use chapter, so looking at, again, future land use, special area plans. As I mentioned, we've done a number of those over the course of the years. Bright Road Area Plan is something we're currently working through and anticipate finishing up that would be incorporated in the new plan. Obviously, we've dealt with the Bridge Street District, West Innovation, Dublin Corporate Area Plan, so we've done those updates over the years and incorporated that as we go. So we're not, again, anticipating major changes, because we've tried to take this incrementally over the past six years and make sure we're aligning and being agile in terms of our development. So that, that portion of that chapter really would be just looking at all those pieces and making sure they're consistent moving forwards. So, you know, we also include land use principles within there, which, again, sort of helps define that land use vision for the city. Chapter five is the transportation chapter, which deals with, obviously, street network, roadway improvements, character, as well as bike connectivity, public transportation, and ultimately, the thoroughfare plan. So we would be looking at some updates to that. So over the last couple of years, the travel demand model has been updated several times. There is, in this 2020 budget, for then a third modeling of that, really looking at that, changing that horizon year from 2040 to 2045. So again, we're staying in line and staying current. So there's not, again, a major overhaul unless council determines that that's something that they would want to look at or revisit. Chapter six and seven are community facilities and historic preservation. So again, taking into account our city's facility master plan, as well as sort of our reconfiguring of city departments and moving to different buildings. In addition to work completed with the historic and cultural assessment, we would anticipate all those pieces and parts being included in these updates to this chapter. But again, overall, not really making major modifications as we move forward with the update to those. Fiscal health looks, obviously, at the financial piece of this and analyzing how the different land use scenarios impact growth and development. We have not done an update to that, which we would anticipate doing as part of this. This portion typically would require some outside consultant work, just, again, to add that level of technical support to our staff. So that, that piece would be something we would anticipate doing and have to accommodate that as we move forward as well. And then demographics was chapter nine, which, again, is looking at all the population education, all those sort of data details. We would want to, obviously, anticipate using census data, as well as then Morpse's Housing Study and incorporating that as part of our analysis and update. But again, not major, major changes to that. And then chapter 10 is utilities. And over the past couple of years, the water distribution model hasn't been updated, but several updates to the various sanitary sewer connection and evaluation studies have occurred. So again, we would continue using that data and looking at that overall. And then, as I mentioned, implementation is chapter 11, so that's sort of the overall strategies and objectives that, I guess, help us implement the plan. So in terms of our timeline, on the very last page of your memo, as I mentioned, we would anticipate taking chapters one and three first, then follow with community facilities and historic preservation, and then demographics, because they sort of build upon each other. All those building blocks, all that data helps us then get to the land use piece of this, followed by transportation, utilities, fiscal, and then implementation. So at this point, staff is recommending that as our sort of approach for this. We were looking at beginning this work sort of the second half of next year, again, to help anticipate all this projects that are currently underway, work that we're in the middle of or wanting to get that data in order to incorporate as part of this. And we would anticipate this being an 18-month to two-year timeframe, again, just given the complexity of all these pieces, although it's not, again, meant to be a major overhaul. It's just getting all these pieces and parts and staff workload together. This is, again, our sort of initial run at this. But obviously, tonight, just wanted to be able to answer any questions that you have, seeing if this is aligning with what your goals and vision were. And again, as we move forward, we can pinpoint more specifically, you know, timeframes and all those things. But tonight, just wanted to get your feedback on that and guidance to move forward.
So this would involve staff doing some of this. You're going to organize some planning and zoning joint work sessions and all kinds of different things as you go through this proposed list of items that you have.
Yep.
Does anybody have comment on that?
Well, my goal in looking at the community plan is that we had a community conversation about some of these things, because I think that as we grow and change, it's time to take a look at where we are and where we want to go, and what's working the best for us, and what assets we want to preserve, and what changes we want to make to either improve or to avoid things that maybe citizens don't care for. As I look at each one of these chapters, I can see where there could be a lot of great community conversation, and I think it's a conversation that has to come from our citizens. I appreciate that we can utilize council and planning and zoning and ARB to do these things, but I think when you set a community plan, the community must set the plan, especially about character and environment, because it's so precious to them. So as we go forward, I think it's a perfect opportunity to start trying out some of our technology in surveying town hall meetings, roundtable conversations, that would give feedback to staff to be able to move in a direction that the community would like. So I'm in favor of that. The only other comment I would make is, when we do get together to have our work sessions, I think those work sessions should be all together with council and planning and zoning and ARB together at the table. So many more good ideas come across because the perspectives are broader, they're more diverse, and you hear from the citizenry at the time that council is sitting and talking. So those would be my suggestions, and I just would encourage very substantial community input.
Kathy, anything?
I had written the same thing as Jane, that community involvement points are essential. And as I'm thinking about this, and I appreciate in the packet tonight, there were some updates on retail trends. I know that's some things. I just can see opportunities where, with the community input, it's opportunities to bring experts in from around the region, because we have some here, from Morpse or whatever, to talk about. What are the trends in retail? What are the trends in transportation? We have a lot of transportation partners here. And so I think you get community involvement. I also think you have a wonderful opportunity. opportunity to have community engagement and understanding of things that are happening in our region. So, I just, I think it could really be an interesting opportunity to bring in our colleagues from around the community, to talk with residents and get their feedback and, and all of that. So, I would make those same points. Do you have a guess about when it might be done? You see the start in 2020, and these are sequential. I get that. Do you have a thought?
She's two years.
I mean, again, we were looking at conservatively a two-year timeframe. It could be done quicker than that. It really just sort of depends on, it's a lot of pieces and parts and departments.
The last community plan process we did took how long?
I mean, it was about that timeframe.
Okay.
Really? I thought it was.
I mean, 2014.
About that long and about, and about $2 million.
Okay.
And that's not counting staff time. And so, my only point of that is significant undertaking. So, rather than reinventing it, because it's been treated as a living document, I think, pretty well. That's why I'd ask that. Let's just look at this chapter by chapter, and let's keep it alive. So, that's, that's kind of the process. So, yeah, two years would be, given the workload, you know, I think, is, is pretty reasonable. And just the other thing, while I've got the mic, if you don't mind, I just wanted to add, thank you for being sure to reinforce the engagement piece. I, that's absolutely the spirit of it, number one. Number two, the other thing you might want to consider, and I know council member Fox and I have had discussion about this, is we've talked about the historic district task force and doing our homework and trying to get folks assigned to that, is the notion of maybe bringing in speakers and to get thoughts going and what's going on in the world and that kind of stuff. So, those kind of things should all be incorporated along this process so that you're, you know, you've got, you're keeping up to date and you're keeping the public up to date on those kind of things, too.
John, anything?
Yeah, I just want to say that I know I agree with you, Dana, that there should be just certain parts that should be tuned up. I think, was it '98 that we started the first one, and it was two, two and a half years I served on that committee? And then, I think we had another one since then for another two years, so.
Yeah, the 2007 one was pretty extensive. That was definitely a two-year plus. That was the one that was multi, you know, million dollar. Right, yeah. Yeah, 2013 was a shorter timeframe because, again, it was sooner after. But, yeah, that major, it was supposed to be an update, but it ended up being a major overhaul, was a lot of time and energy.
Yeah. So, I think the thing's pretty functional, the way it sits and, you know, different, as you said, different chapters that have to be updated. And I'd hate to sit down and rewrite the entire thing again and start from scratch.
Michael, anything? Christina, anything?
Just to echo, I agree that it's a living document. I think that's good, the way it's been handled, and I agree about the community input. I think it's really critical.
Chris?
I was on the planning commission. We did the community plan update in '07, and that was a really valuable time. So, I do believe that it is important to involve the plant, planning commission on that because ultimately, they're the users of the document. So, we can write the moon and the stars, but they have to be able to use it. So, they need to have a comfort level. The only other thing I would bring up is when we did it in 2007, the, the world was digitally a very different place, and we printed the community plan and we sent it out. And so, you could, you could look at it and you could reflect is, were you living up to the community plan? I agree that it should be a living document, and that is a wonderful thing. But it comes with some consequences because it can change frequently, and the changes aren't really captured at the time of the change. It just becomes the new version of online. And, you know, we drill down on those documents. If you hover over something, you know, new screens will open up and things like that. So, Dana, if we were going to bring a speaker or something in, I would really like to hear, how do we make a document that can serve, A, as a benchmark, and B, be living at the same time, so that we, we have an opportunity to capture the changes? So, you know, it, the community plan looks very different than it did in 2007, but we don't have any, we don't really know when the updates happened. They just happened, and they're online. I mean, you'd have to dig pretty deep, and it would be difficult. So, I would like to know how, how we can be a 21st century community with a cutting-edge community plan, but also have something that is, that we can refer to, that is hard and fast, and we can touch it and feel it. So, those are, that's my only thoughts on that.
Okay. You got what you need? Do we need to vote on this, or?
No, I don't think so. I think we've got this appropriately in the record, and so, I think we're, I think we're good.
Okay, all right.
Great. Thank you.
Staff comments?
Only two items. You know, in the spirit of Veterans Day, our Monday morning update that went out to our staff, it's, it goes out every Monday morning, and it's kind of like an internal electronic newsletter. And, and I want to thank our communications staff for recognizing the veterans that we have on staff. But what I came to realize, we have 42 veterans on our staff, which is 10% of our workforce, which is, which is pretty incredible. And so, I want to, obviously, say thanks to all of them for their service and all the great work they do as our employees. Also, want to take this opportunity to say thank you and thank our community for the employer's support of the Garden Reserve, having been one of those folks, having deployed and, and all the stress that that puts on the organization and the family. Thank you for your support of that. We have one member on deployment. We have several others always preparing that are active, still active, in the reserve component. So, so thank you for what you do to support them. I was just at a retire, I'm, I'm one of those old guys now who was at a retired general officer brief on all day Saturday, and, and to hear all the operational tempo stuff that continues to go on with all that's happening overseas and domestically is just amazing what those folks are being called on to do and, and the pace of that. So, we've got to stay in support of, of those folks. So, so thank you for that. Also want to recommend that we do not have a November 25 work session, but instead, we would put in its place a 5:30 meeting prior to your, we'll call it a work session, I guess, prior to your next council meeting on November 18, at which time, we would brief you on all that we know on the proposed AEP transmission line that's being proposed in the southwest portion of the city. The idea there being, AEP will be present to give you some update from their perspective, and then staff will present our perspective of that proposal, as well as things that council may want to consider and associated costs relative to trying to minimize the impact of, of that. So, that would be our intent for November 18th, if you are so supportive of that idea.
We are. And that will get published, that that's going to happen?
Yeah, certainly, we'll advertise that and get that word out. And, again, you know, we'll emphasize this is a work session. Typically, you don't take public comment at that. That's all up to you. You can call an audible and do that if you'd like. It has been done before. But, but our goal would be to try to spend that, probably take that whole hour and a half to get you up to, to all that. And then probably, and then on December 2, at your final meeting would be, based on your feedback or any guidance, would be any specifics that we would bring back to you, and at which time you might garner some public input at that, at that meeting.
Okay. Put it on the calendar. Committee reports, P and Z, Jane?
Admin.
Admin, Chris?
We selected some CSAC members. I will notify everyone, an interview tomorrow, and notify the successful candidates, and we will make that a public announcement at our next meeting.
Thanks, Chris. Community development, John?
We'll be meeting Wednesday night at 6 o'clock, Chris and Kathy.
Thanks, John. Finance, Mike?
Looks like Wednesday, the 13th, finance is at 6. That's following the admin committee meeting at 4, if I have the calendar right.
Okay. Public services committee, Christina?
Nothing at this time.
How about Coda, Kathy?
Yes, just a couple of comments. We had the, our annual retreat last week, and the real goal of that is, as I'd mentioned before, Coda's really just completed a new strategic plan with a focus of getting, ensuring that we do what we need to do to move every life forward, working with the community. So, a lot of the discussion at the retreat is some of the things that we talked about here. How do we work closely with the community? How do we have partnerships? Because, as we know, transportation is vital to jobs, getting workers is vital to economic growth, and, and really, what, what can Coda do? What can Coda do in partnership with suburbs like Dublin to really foster that? So, that will really be the focus, and I, I think that will be a great year. The other thing, I just, two other points. Tomorrow, Coda is offering free rides on Election Day, so, to make it easy for everybody to get out and vote, which we, of course, encourage to do. And they're offering also free ride for veterans on Veterans Day in appreciation for their work. So, they're continuing to live their mission and move it forward. So, I appreciate the opportunity to serve on there, and I think it's going to be quite a good year. They will open their new customer service center. The main headquarters downtown has been closed for a few months for renovation. That will open in, later in the month, as will a new mobility hub, where, again, working with partners, the goal is to bring both technology people and solution providers together in one place to, to, to look at mobility in the future. So, lots of good things happening there. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Friendship Association, Christina?
Nope, not till next week.
Morpse and Chris?
We have an executive committee on Thursday.
Logan Union, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, CAC.
Nothing to report?
About the Northwest 33 Quarter Group.
Not at this time. Thanks.
And Jane here, and that, too. You got nothing, Amy? Double RS Council, John?
Nothing.
Board of Education, Christina?
No.
Chief, you got anything for Washington Township?
Yes, sir.
Anything good? Jane?
Nothing except thanks. At the HOA meeting, they presented, and they gave a little space and time to them, and I think that's great. So, thank you.
Mike, stay right there with you, Jane. Council on?
I don't really have very much, but I, all I'm interested in seeing if we can't schedule the get-together with the council and the commissions before the end of the year together, if we can, ARB and P and Z and council. For those who can attend, I think, I think the commissions would really like to have a little sit-down time with council. So, I'd like to try to figure that out. I know we've got, we're so sure on time, but.
We've been, we've been working on that, trying to figure out a date, and we've been having a really hard time. And we're going to get right in the smack of holidays and the availability of folks. Jenny, any comment from your inans?
Can we think about January, then? If we can't get it before the end of the year, let's make sure.
Yeah, I think internally, we were definitely saying, you know, January, if we couldn't get it pulled off by the end of the year.
And I, and I know we're talking with Jenny and planning and zoning, we're talking with Jenny about the process for commission members, and hopefully, we can just cement that down because they are requesting time with council, and I think it's important that we give it to them.
The real opportunity I think we had was November 25. We were trying to clear the, clear the slate to maybe pull it off on the 25th, but we have so many people out that week that, that, that was probably our one target of opportunity, so.
Well, let's not let January go without doing it. Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Jane. Kathy?
I wanted to say thanks. I appreciated the update on the, that was in the memo about the roundabout at 161 in Riverside. They continued work to see what we can do to, although accidents are trending down in a very positive way, get those to zero if we can. And I appreciated in the memo that there were conversations with, I guess, Carmel, Indiana, and some others, to look at opportunities for continuing to, to bring that forward, including things like lowering speed when approaching raised sidewalk, crosswalks, et cetera. And I know the community appreciates that. They continue, ask, ask about that. So, I appreciate being updated on that and the ability to share some of that. The only other thing that I would add is, I know we discussed last time about potentially increasing the number of leaf pickups during the very high intensity period, which we are now in. So, I don't know where we ended up on that, how we're, are we, are we going to be able to do that here over the next few weeks?
You want to speak to that, Megan? I think the answer's no, but I'll let Megan explain more detail about that. It's, it's just, it's just an equipment and staffing ability.
Yeah, as Dana says, we're really limited by the number of leaf collection, pieces of equipment that we have in the staff to staff. Those equipments, we use three-person crews to, to staff each piece of equipment. What we are doing is, as we complete a zone each week, so prior to this week, where a lot of the leaves have fallen now, prior to this week, we were wrapping up the zones around Wednesday. So, we've been working ahead. So, as we wrap up the zone for the week, in previous weeks, we work ahead into the next zone. So, that's fewer leaves that we have to pick up the next week. So, hopefully, that'll help, but I don't see us being able to complete both zones in a single week this year. But we are benchmarking other cities. Other cities have been purchasing different equipment that's more efficient and only requires one or two-person crews. So, that would enable us to, you know, the more machines we have out on the street, the more productive we are. But we're researching that, and we'll be prepared to present a report to council in advance of next year.
Can you ask our volunteers for possibly a Saturday shift?
So, we will get into overtime starting this week. We actually had that discussion today. So, we're, we're at minimum staffing levels now. We've declared, you know, leave will not be approved to make sure that we have all nine pieces of equipment out on the street during these heavy weeks.
You have the possibility of snow and ice coming up for you on Thursday, too.
Yes.
That's always easy.
That, yeah, that makes it very challenging.
And Monday.
Yeah, and the leaves are wetter now. So, yeah, it's getting to be the challenging time. But we are, we have called minimum staffing, so no discretionary leave is being approved for staff at this point in time. So, we're.
And we would, we would extend the season, too. Obviously, if we don't make the rounds and we're not covered up with snow, we'll extend our pickup times.
You know, Megan, back in the day, the township officials that were elected went out and plowed snow and did all that, so.
Come here, Coach.
There you go.
You are not allowed to touch a vehicle.
Oh, man.
You might see.
They don't even let me near them either.
That's why, that's why.
Except at the rodeo. We have had other staff participating this year. I plan on going out on Friday.
Yeah, listen to this. Megan is going out on Friday. I think the citizens of the city need to hear that we are saying no optional leave for our staff so that we can pick up your leaves. Thank you, thank you, staff, from the, from the citizens of this city, and thank you. You should not be out there driving a truck, but okay. But I think that's important that people hear that. I mean, we're so dedicated to providing the services that we're asking our staff not to take any time off that they deserve. So, there we are. Thank you, staff.
Anything else, Kathy?
No, thank you.
John?
Nothing. Thank you.
Michael?
Yeah, in the extra items there in the packet today, there was a discussion about the roundabout, crosswalks, and I have seen time and time and time again, in fact, that some of the double-laneed cross roundabouts, you have to really be careful because you see somebody, and if you stop, you really have to worry about the, the other lane taking them out if they think they're, they're safe to go. So, I don't know, maybe approach, some kind of approach, like we have over at, over at the park, where the bike path comes across, solar thing, and it lights up blinking light or something to notify. I don't know, most really, they're looking, looking one way left, and the people are crossing the other way. See it every day, right out in front of my office building. So, I wanted to raise that point, that hopefully, staff will continue to look at that. And then I was, the, the citing the Reagan conference report for staff, and some of you saw that. I found it interesting. It noted duty, attention span, among other reasons, that fewer words are more effective than many words. I will just pass that, that bit of wisdom on. And then, good luck to our fellow council folks that are running. And I've said it many times, but if you haven't put your name on a ballot, you have no idea how personal it is. So, with that, good luck to both of you.
Thanks, Mike.
Christina?
Thanks for the memo on the future of retail. I, I'd like to have another conversation at some point in the future about what's the so what of that? Like, how does that inform our economic development team and so on and so forth? But I thought the information was really good. Thanks for putting that in there. Thank you for putting together the evening of gratitude to thank our, our volunteers. It was really great to see how many volunteers we have. And as Greg pointed out, they volunteer over 44,000 hours a year. It's a very, very impressive number. So, that was wonderful. Good luck to all the candidates out there. To Mike's point, it is hard and difficult to put your name on a ballot for a public election, and it, it really takes a lot of commitment, and I commend anybody who does it. I know I've been yawning all night, and I'm exhausted, but I'm happy to do it. And I know that everyone else who's running is happy to do it as well. So, good luck to everybody out there. Have a good night. Take a deep breath. It's almost over. That's it.
Chris?
I wanted to respond. The tree waiver memo in our packet for evergreen trees to deciduous trees conversion on a waiver basis, I think that's a very good idea. So, I think I'm getting nods from all over the place. So, maybe bring that legislation for, or that, perhaps a policy or something that, that, that's an applicable waiver when there is necessary screening. The South High Street tree removal and streetscape update, I'd like to put a hold on that if we could, so we can talk about tree species. Two of the tree species that have been selected are both apple scabs, which defoliate in the summertime. Or crab, I'm sorry, they're crab apples susceptible to apple scab, which will cause them to defoliate in the summer. Two of the three species recommended are crab apples. So, I think we should discuss that further before we move forward with those selections. So, I think we should discuss that further before we move forward with those selections. So, I'd like to put a hold on that.
I think we're too late. Are we too late? I need you to, I want you to inform where we're at on this.
Well, then why did we get a memo?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, I think our forestry staff has done a really good job, you know, with, with their choices of plantings and I felt, you know, pretty confident that they knew what they were, they were doing here. But if, if there's that much concern about it, we'll plant them somewhere else and buy something else. But I welcome that conversation.
Yeah, I do know that they took a lot of time in looking at the conditions on which they had to work. So, I'll go back to them and express your concerns certainly. When I say that, you know, it's too late, it's too late that they've been planted, it doesn't mean they can't be removed and relocated and put in a different species. So, it has literally been days, if not, we may not even be finished yet. I know they were working on that this week. So, I'll get back to our forestry group and we'll talk.
Aren't those, well, aren't those down there already? I thought we already had some of those down there, that species.
We have lilacs down there.
Lilacs.
They're Adirondack and Royal Raindrops. So, the Adirondack is an upright crab and the Royal Raindrops is a more of an ovate form.
And they're not on the scab-resistant list?
Well, the one thing that, I don't know what that means, but the one thing, the one thing I would tell you is that, you know, the one thing I would tell you is that what we're doing right now is focusing on not getting into the power lines. And once we remove those power lines, we can, we can redirect and we can change if you want to do that. Right now, we're just trying to create some visual down there. I would suspect that once those power lines come out, we might relook that and this isn't anything that couldn't be otherwise redone. I think you'll notice too, there's the potential of adding trees at some point that could have a higher, that could be taller and have better canopy with them once, once those power lines are, are removed and we know for sure they're going to be out of the way and we can coordinate a planting on that. I think it's exciting that we are doing the planters. I think for a long time, we thought those couldn't be done on those poles and I was glad to see that that could actually be done. And that's, that's pretty labor-intensive to keep those things up, so there is a cost to that, which we put in there as well, so. But if you, if you want to change the planting, then just tell us what you want us to do and, and we'll, we'll go rip them, we'll go take them out and replant them. So, I'm not, I don't want to shut anyone down on that, I just.
Well, I, we certainly would want to plant two different species of crab apple. I mean, because they're going to get scab and they're going to defoliate and what we need in the historic district is a tree, you know, is foliage presence, it'll soften, you know, just like we saw when the existing trees came down. It hardens up all of the places around it. So, you know, we can talk about it. Maybe it can, maybe we can refer to community development committee or something like that and we can talk about, you know, this is one of the most important decisions that we will make in the historic district because the tree canopy contributes as much, if not more, to the architecture of the area than the buildings themselves. And I think we saw that when the existing trees came down. So, this warrants discussion and a really well-thought-out plan.
Okay, so is that direction from four members of council to stop what? I need, I need that direction.
Well, if we're planting them in the ground right now and we're going to do a replanting when the lines are buried, then, you know, I don't want to waste the money that we've already spent. But before we, before we go to the final solution, then we need to have this conversation of what is the tree canopy going to be in the historic district? You know, if these are in the ground, I'm not really in favor of pulling them up. John, what do you think?
You know, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure. I want to, I want to check, one, if this is on, there's certain crab apples that are scab-resistant and these may or may not be. And then the next thing is, you know, I agree with you on the canopy, how the canopy relates to the architecture, one-story, two-story, and that sort of depends on, and I'm not sure about these species of the trees that were selected, what their final elevation is related to the buildings and how they're going to, you know, either unify that downtown area or obliterate certain.
Their elevations are.
They're keeping it under the wires, I understand that.
Yeah, their elevations are intended to be low at this point.
Yeah.
They are and they're going to stay pretty dwarfed right now until, you know, we can figure out, we've got generally a timing on those line removals, so, you know, we stick to our budget plan, I think, but we have still some work to do in terms of the option related to how we relocate those. We're still working on that. So, I don't want to sit here and profess that we have an exact timeframe on that because it's a little bit more complicated than it sounds. I think we've got great opportunity, but it's a little bit more complicated. So, I'm not quite ready to sign up for the timing on that yet, which is why we're trying to add something that, that, you know, at least gets us some better visual than what we currently have down there.
You know, I think what's important is the structure of the branches and how it all relates. You know, you don't want to look at a street tree with a bunch of lollipop trees going down.
Well, one of them is upright and one of them is ovate. And the ovate ones are going to be a problem because your planting area is only about three and a half, four feet wide. And so, when you, we have an ovate tree that's designed to stay low, we're going to.
Is that going to impede pedestrian traffic?
You also have incredibly limited space to plant these, which is why we're also trying to stay away from the type of trees that we planted before, they get too.
Oh, I'm not suggesting.
Large because of the effects that it has on the infrastructure down there, so.
When is the community development committee meeting? Is that this week?
It's in two days.
Well, you're both on the community development committee. Is there any way that staff could communicate?
Sure, we'll bring our forestry team in. Matt, can you see if they're available and let's, let's have that discussion among the.
Welcome to tree world.
Among the pros.
Talking about trees. Yes, well, there you go.